Okay, the light is on and it's time to get started here. And welcome everyone this evening. I think we've got just enough chairs, so we've got quite a good turnout this evening. So, welcome again. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
Okay, this evening, we have quite a bit of business in front of us to take care of, and we do have some proclamations. And we also have a public hearing, a couple of public hearings. So, I think there's some folks that are here for the ordinances that are in front of the council this evening. So, it's going to be a little while before we get to it, so just kind of bear with us here, but we will be taking that up this evening. First is, this proclamation is Child Abuse Prevention Month for April 2018. Whereas this April marks the 35th year of the U.S. Presidential Proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas each April, Child Abuse Prevention Month activities are held in communities across the nation to raise awareness about child abuse and the need for the entire community to become involved. And whereas during the National Child Abuse Prevention Month, we renew our commitment to preventing child abuse and rededicate ourselves to working together to ensure all children can have a bright and hopeful future. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, and health problems. And whereas abuse and neglect are far more reaching than you might imagine. No socioeconomic group is immune. Children of all races and ethnicities are victims of child abuse. In 2017, 527 Lynn County children were abused or neglected. There were 7,063 substantiated cases of child abuse and neglect in Oregon during that time involving 11,077 victims. Forty-five point one percent of those victims were younger than six years old, and there were 29 Oregon children who died from causes related to familial caregiver abuse and/or neglect. Whereas effective prevention programs succeed through partnerships of community groups that help support parents to provide a safe and nurturing environment. Child abuse is a total community problem affecting all levels of society, and the effects of child abuse need to be addressed by the entire community. Now therefore, I Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase our participation in efforts to recognize and prevent child abuse. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 28th day of March 2018. And with that, we have a representative here, Sarah Helgason. And if she'd like to come forward and say a few words about Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you, Mayor Kenopa. My name is Sarah Helgason. I am with Lynn County CAN, that stands for Child Abuse Network. It's out of United Way of Lynn County. I work with a coalition of agencies, including ABC House, CASA, Family Tree Relief Nursery, law enforcement, and community volunteers. On their behalf, I'd like to say some of the child abuse awareness events that we have going on throughout the county this month. Family Tree Relief Nursery has a month-long diaper drive. One of the host sites is United Way, that's off of Hill Street. April 5th, ABC House has a Celebration of Hope. April 7th, excuse me, Lebanon has a Walk a Mile that was put on by the Lebanon Police Department in Dale's Blue Angels. April 7th, there's also a Walk a Mile in Sweet Home put on by the Sweet Home Police Department. And on April 19th, CAN will be putting a blue pinwheel garden on display at the county courthouse. And if at all you see the county turn blue through ribbons and pinwheels, that is in recognition of April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Yeah, thank you. Okay, next is another proclamation, and this is Distracted Driving Awareness Month, April 2018. Whereas the City of Albany holds the health and safety of its citizens at a paramount concern, and whereas distracted driving occurs when drivers engage in activities that divert their attention from the road and their primary task of driving, such as texting, talking on a cellphone, interacting with passengers, listening to loud music, and reading. And whereas smartphone use, because it distracts the driver's visual, manual, and cognitive abilities, is especially dangerous for the driver and others on our roadways. And whereas 70% of Americans admit to using their smartphone while driving to text, check email, access social media, and use their phone and video tools. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports that more than nine people are killed and over 1,060 people are injured each day in crashes that are reported to involve a distracted driver in the United States. And whereas the Oregon Department of Transportation reports that a crash involving a distracted driver in Oregon occurs every two and a half hours. And whereas Oregon has distracted driving laws that prohibit the use of mobile electronic devices while operating a motor vehicle. And whereas distracted driving is a serious life-threatening practice that is preventable. And whereas in order to reduce the number of crashes, as well as improve drive safety, Albany motorists should dedicate themselves to adopting the maintaining safe behavior while behind the wheel. Now therefore, I Sharon Kenopa, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim April 2018 to be Distracted Driving Awareness Day in Albany, Oregon, and call upon all residents to commit themselves to distraction-free driving behavior. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 28th day of March 2018. Okay, all right. And I think it is very timely, because I think probably most all of us have probably violated this in one time or another, and thank goodness for Bluetooth now that's out there, so.
Mayor, I just want to bring up that it says you do hereby proclaim April of 18 to be distracted driving awareness day, and I wonder if that should be mine?
It probably should have been on that for the month, yeah. So, it should be actually all year we should all be, have that awareness, so, yes, thank you, Bessie. Okay, first on the agenda, council, you have, this is a communication item, and this is accepting Lindsay Godwin's resignation from the Planning Commission. She found that she's not having enough time. She was a wonderful, wonderful asset to that Planning Commission, as she is a planner in her profession, so she was very quick to be able to learn our development code.
Move to acceptance and a letter of recognition. Thank you.
Second.
Was there a second?
Yep.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
What would we do if, if we said no?
I know, it's true, yeah. Okay, now bear with me, I've got a long script to have to read for our public hearing that's coming up. And so, on tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a zoning map amendment from industrial park to light industrial, a conditional use for new construction of a school bus transportation facility, a site plan review for new construction of a self-serve storage facility, and a property line adjustment between two parcels owned by the Greater Albany Public School District as described in planning files, CZ, CC, ZC 0117, CU 1017, SP 0817, and LA 0217. The property owners are Greater Albany Public School District, Glorieta Bay LLC III, the third one, Phyllis Pearl and Fine Trust, Lotus Trust, and North Coast Electric Properties LLP. Okay, we've got all that. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at 7:25 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. Do any members of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? And do any members wish to report a site visit?
I had better do that. I used to work right next to it for several years.
I drive by several times.
Yeah, I've been by, which is...
A drive-by.
Yep. Do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? Okay. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. So, at this time, I'll call for the staff report, so Planner David.
Thank you. David Martino, Planner here at the City of Albany. Good evening, all. I'll start this evening by presenting a summary of the staff report, and together with me tonight, I have colleagues, Lot Richardson, Matthew Rutgers, and Ron Irish, and they're on hand to answer any questions if I'm not able to for some reason. I usually can, if I can answer them sometime. This consolidated application provides our concurrent review of a proposed zoning map amendment that conditional use review for new construction of a school district bus transportation facility, site plan review for new construction of a self-serve storage facility, and a property line adjustment. These applications are being considered jointly because the school district and Glorieta Bay wanted to maximize the development opportunities on the respective properties. And as you noted, the applicants are the Greater Albany Public School District, Glorieta Bay LLC, the Pearl and Fine Trust, the Lotus Trust, and the North Coast Electric Properties LLP. The applicants are represented by Candace Rivera of Scott Letman Company, Brian Vendetta of Udell Engineering and Surveying, and architects Wally Gressel and William Miles. The properties are located in the area around 2455 and 2475 Ferry Street Southwest, together with some unaddressed parcels to the south and east, and 2398 Marion Street. The first application for your consideration is a proposed zoning map amendment that would rezone five parcels of land totaling 19.21 acres from industrial park to light industrial. The comprehensive plan designation for the property is light industrial. According to the planned designation zoning matrix in the Development Code, both industrial park and light industrial can implement the light industrial planning designation. If the zone change is approved, the Greater Albany Public School District will construct a 41,500-square-foot school bus transportation facility with a canopy-covered bus parking stall area, employee parking, landscaping, and other improvements. South of the bus facility is a proposed 958-unit self-storage facility on property that's owned by Glorieta Bay LLC. One of the buildings will be three stories in height and will feature both outside-facing and inside-facing units. The other rows of buildings will be one-story. There will be an office with manager's quarters that will be located around the southern tip of the property. Both the school district property and the self-serve storage properties will share a joint-use access easement to Ferry Street, and then they'll both benefit from a gated emergency vehicle access easement to Lion Street. They'll also share storm drainage facilities and water for fire suppression use. The last part of the application will be a property line adjustment and right-of-way dedication. The school district's RM Zone property located to the east of the proposed bus facility consists of about six and a quarter acres. Of that, about half of it will be used for employee parking for the bus transportation facility, together with some wetlands that will be preserved on-site. An additional three-fourths of an acre of the property will be used for the dedication of extending Lion Street through the property. The remaining property to the east will be available for medium-density residential Over by the front door, I think we have some handouts that have the review criteria. The first set would be the zone change review criteria. There's five review criteria when evaluating a zone change, and each one must be satisfied in order to recommend approval. And handouts listing the review criteria for each type of land use application should be in your council packets as well. The school bus transportation facility was reviewed in accordance with conditional use criteria found in Section 2.250 of the Albany Development Code. These criteria address characteristics of the neighborhood, compatibility, utilities and transportation, significant offsite impacts, and any impacts to special purpose districts such as natural resources and hillsides. The self-serve storage facility was reviewed in accordance with site plan review criteria found in Section 2.450 of the Albany Development Code. These criteria address utilities, transportation, design compatibility, compliance with previous conditions of approval, and any impacts to special purpose districts. And then finally, the project was reviewed in accordance with property line adjustment criteria found in Section 11.120 of the Albany Development Code. These criteria ensure that new lots are not being created and that the resulting adjusted properties remain in compliance with the zoning and development. Next, I will overview each of these applications. So, the proposed zoning map amendment will rezone five parcels of land totaling 19.21 acres from industrial park to light industrial. According to the applicant, the main purpose of the proposed zone change is to provide a site that would accommodate future growth for the Greater Albany School District's bus transportation facility. The optimal location would be within a mile of the Lynn County Regional Fuel Facility, and another factor in the decision for the school district was that the site had to have direct access to a collector or arterial street. The subject property meets these standards. The site is also an optimal location for the proposed self-storage facility in that it's also centrally located with access to a collector and arterial street. The site will also provide ready access to nearby low and medium-density residential areas. Another advantage that LI zoning has over the industrial park zoning for the applicants has to do with the lot coverage standards and minimal onsite landscaping requirements that allow the subject properties to be developed more intensively. The requested change in zoning will not have a significant effect on the transportation system, and staff analysis that's described in the staff report finds that the light industrial zone best satisfies the applicable goals and policies of the Albany Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. If the zone change is approved tonight, the Greater Albany School District will construct a 41,500-square-foot bus facility that will include a maintenance and repair facility located on the north side of the building, and it'll have about 500 square feet of office area, together with eight repair bays, a wash bay, and two equipment storage bays. The center of the building consists of office space and room for the bus drivers' lockers, break room, restrooms, training rooms, together with 32 covered bus parking spaces. On the west side of the property, there'll be 80 partially-covered bus parking spaces that will be planned in three rows. The school bus facility is being designed for a possible 20- to 30-year build-out. The primary access to the site will be through a private shared driveway to Ferry Street. Buses and employees will use this for access to the property. A 20-foot-wide emergency vehicle access will be provided to Lion Street, but it will not serve as a point of access for regular activities. To the east of the maintenance building, the western half of the 6.3-acre parcel that's owned by the school district's own residential medium-density will be utilized for employee and visitor parking spaces, stormwater detention, landscaping, and wetland preservation. Another three-quarters acre will be utilized for the dedication of the future extension of Lion Street. The remaining 2.95 acres will be available for future residential development. The project is required to provide public infrastructure improvements such as an eight-inch public water main between Ferry and Lion, and construction of Lion Street along the frontage of the school district property, together with the public sidewalk along the west side of the future Lion Street. The RM Zone property owned by the school district is bordered on the south by duplexes and single-family residences, and on the north by large-lot, single-family residences that have further development potential, and they're all located in the RM Zone. To the east, across Marion Street, there's lots at or zone RS 6.5 with development characterized by single-family residences. The school bus facility will provide landscaping, buffering, and screening, an eight-foot-tall security fence with privacy slats, shielded lighting, and setbacks to mitigate the adverse impacts to surrounding properties. As proposed in condition, the application for conditional use review to construct a 41,500-square-foot school bus facility with a 133-space employee parking lot and other site improvements satisfies all of the applicable review criteria as outlined in the staff The next application is a site plan review that's submitted by Scott Letman of Flare Glorieta Bay LLC for a proposed 958-unit self-serve storage facility with site improvements on an 8.62-acre parcel located just south of where the proposed school bus transportation facility would go. Self-serve storage facilities are permitted in the light industrial district with an approved site plan review. The review focuses on the layout of a proposed development, including building placement, setbacks, parking areas, external storage, open areas, and landscaping. The project includes 10 single-story storage buildings. There'll be one three-story storage building in the middle of the site, and then a 1,496 square-foot office and manager's quarters, which will all be located on six and a half acres of land, with an additional three-quarters of an acre to be utilized as an access driveway for the proposed school bus transportation facility, and a small onsite wetland. The remainder of the site will be used for landscaping, buffering, and screening. The applicant proposes to install buffer and screening 40 feet in width, together with an eight-foot-tall side-obscuring fence, and 30 feet of buffering and screening from the abutting residentially zoned property to the south. The applicant will work with the abutting residential neighbors and the city forester to ensure that species, timing, and placement of trees are appropriate to the site. The site circulation pattern incorporates several one-way travel aisles. The use of directional pavement arrows will be required to identify the appropriate circulation pattern for drivers. Other conditions include a requirement to construct public sidewalk to city standards along the site's frontage on Ferry Street, also construct an eight-inch public water main through the site, and provide 11 onsite parking spaces. Staff recommends approval of the self-serve storage facility as condition. The last application under consideration tonight is a property line adjustment. This is necessary to enable the school district to construct the employee parking lot for the bus facility, as well as dedicate right-of-way for the Lion Street extended. The RM Zone school district property currently has frontage on Marion Street. The 5.02-acre industrial site owned by the school district currently has no access to a public street. However, a reciprocal access agreement will be provided to the school district for direct shared access to Ferry Street, as I've mentioned before. The proposed property line adjustment will not create a new lot, nor will it create a landlocked parcel. As part of the property line adjustment, the necessary right-of-way for the extension of Lion Street across the property will be provided. City code requires that new development provide for the continuation of existing streets and surrounding areas. The condition of approval for the school bus facility, which is condition 13, will require construction or financial assurance for the construction of Lion Street along the site's east boundary. So, notice of the public hearing regarding these applications was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the perimeter of all affected properties on February 12. The staff report with exhibits was posted on the Planning Commission and Planning Project's homepage, and the site was posted on February 21st at three different locations. There have been no public comments received prior to the Planning Commission hearing on March 5th or prior to tonight's hearing. So, as proposed in condition, the application satisfy all of the applicable review criteria as outlined in this report. Therefore, the Planning Commission and staff recommend that city council approve the request as condition. There are, however, three modifications I need to point out to you in those conditions of approval. These modifications should be provided to you in your council packets. Specifically, modified conditions 16 and 17 pertain to the school bus facility, and condition 24 applies to the self-serve storage facility. And basically, in condition 16 and 17 is that the applicant must construct utilities as per the city's engineering standards. And in condition 24, we simply repeat that same thing with regard to the self-serve storage facility, that the construction of stormwater detention facilities must be constructed as per the city's engineering standards. And that's all I have for you tonight. Do you have any questions?
Okay, any questions? Yep.
I have a question for probably our street engineer. Whole bunch of buses leaving this area, going down Ferry Street, is there any restriction on which way they can go, at what times? You're looking at Ferry Street to Queen. If you're turning left onto Queen from Ferry Street, that is an abomination. Haven't driven truck there. If there's any, any problems, very much traffic, that bollocks is up the entire area. And where you would have, I don't know, in the morning, or, you know, I don't know when they would all leave, but if you had four or five buses in a row, all going to the high school or the middle school, and they took that route because was right down Queen, you'd have a traffic jam. Is there anything we're doing about that?
No.
Oops.
Well, the traffic study done with the development did look at that intersection, as well as several others. They analyzed it during the morning in the PM peak hour. They analyzed that left-turn movement that you described as an abomination. That's the worst-case movement at the intersection. Our performance standard for that movement is 85% of the movement's capacity during the peak hour. And what they found was that during the peak hour, they're operating at about 40% of that capacity. Capacity of that movement means that there are a certain number of gaps during that peak hour that are big enough on Queen Avenue that somebody can't turn left through that gap. And you take the number of those gaps, divide by the number of movements that want to make it, and our standard is 85%. So, they meet the standards. There's nothing on our development code that would say that it doesn't work, although it is definitely a case of delay. So, there's, if it wasn't a fix based on our code that we were looking at changing there, because our code didn't see a problem.
Well, I guess, thank you, but it doesn't really fix the problem. I am, I am concerned about that, having stood there on many an occasion in a, just a bobtail truck, which is shorter than a bus, not being able to go because there was something else. And of course, anytime there's a train, the whole, you know, the whole thing goes sideways, but is there the possibility that the school district could go to 34th and go the opposite direction to that one school?
There's a possibility that the school district could choose to go a different direction and go south instead of north, if they have the option. At the moment, there's not a way to force them to do that. The next time we, we update our TSP, which is probably not as far off as I would like it to be, we're probably looking at the four- or five-year window before we have to start thinking about that again. The intersections at Ferry and Queen and Ferry at 34th might be located if we start looking at a signal. What happens when you put a signal on either one of those spots is that you make those left turns from the minor road much easier, the capacity problem goes away, but it comes at a price, and the price is that you increase congestion on the major road. And so, that's kind of the trade-off. You really don't want to think about putting in a signal or disrupting the traffic.
You really don't want to think about putting in a signal or disrupting the traffic flows on the major road until the volumes on the minor approach are high enough to justify it. At the moment, we haven't quite got there, but by the time we do our next TSP update, we may well be there.
Well, I guess, they can guarantee a yes vote if they are going to consider going to 34. They don't get a guaranteed yes vote if they decide they want to go to Ferry Street, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it's, I mean, when I was there, I was a truck driver, and that intersection impressed me, as you may well imagine.
So is the egress going to be onto Ferry then, or is it going to be ingress and egress?
They have, you know, the bus barn has one driveway connection to Ferry Street. Full movements, left-in, left-out, right-in, right-outs. Once that driveway loads Ferry, they have a choice about turning south or turning north. Those are their only choices, and there's really not a connection, a good connection between Ferry and any of the other parallel streets to the east, or not a good parallel street to the west. So it's pretty much, once you're on Ferry, you're either going to Queen, or you're going south to 34.
Well, any street you'd go to would be, you know, the next regular feeder would be Marion.
Same, same problem.
And you have a bigger problem, because it's even a smaller street. Lot more.
Because you have a traffic light on each end.
Yeah.
And you have a lot of connecting streets throughout, too. Have other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Now we will take testimony from the applicant, applicants. And the applicant, please come forward to the podium, state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the council.
Russ Allen, representing the Greater Albany Public School District, Business and Operations Director, 718 Southwest Seventh Avenue.
Candace Rivera, representing Scott Letman, 100 Ferry Street Northwest.
So relative to the presentation, I'm appreciative of the work that staff has done. I think it was multiple pages within your packet, probably really exciting reading. It's been, we've been trying.
Yeah. I think it was 350 pages we had total.
I believe as part of staff's presentation, they should have quizzed you on various aspects of it. We've been working.
We've been trying that.
We've been working for at least five years, probably longer, in attempting to locate an acceptable bus facility within the city limit. We felt this one met the criteria. We would have preferred lights for our egress at the major arterials, but that didn't happen. But we believe that this one does meet our criteria with regards to be centrally located, large enough for a 20- to 30-year plan, great access to the fueling facility. With regards to Council Kellum's concerns on traffic, two comments on that. While we can't agree to any kind of prohibition, because at 5:00 in the morning, or at 10:00 at night, it may not be, it's not likely going to be an issue, but for two reasons. During normal operations, we have no intention of making a left on Queen off of Ferry. One would be just the normal traffic. We don't want to try and get an 84-passenger bus to sneak in in between the cars, for safety reasons, for queuing reasons, for all of those reasons. If at, during traffic periods of time, the buses will go down to Ferry, turn right on 34th, turn right on Pacific, and then likely left on Queen to get over to either Memorial or West Albany High School, or Liberty for that matter. The other thing is that our general operating procedure right now is to avoid the train tracks there anyway. So even without the traffic, the buses would typically be routed down to 34th anyway, because we do avoid that intersection, just because, as everyone knows, it's too easy to get caught behind a train. You get a bus behind a train, and now we're 10 to 15 minutes late to their next stop. So as just as a matter of routing, that is not an intersection, or that's not an area that buses will typically travel.
Well, you're this close to having a yes vote.
I don't know what else I can do. There are times in the day that our buses do run where it might make sense for them to go up there and turn left.
There are times in the day when no one would care.
But as a general rule, that is not our. That is, the other nice thing about the facility is, even though it requires a little bit more traveling, we can get to any place we need to go. We can go up to, we can go up Ferry, turn right on Queen, and access that area of town. We can go down to 34th and turn right on 34th and access that area of town.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Candace?
And we concur with the staff report and the conditions of approval. We have no objections to any of the conditions or the modified conditions.
Okay. All right. Any other, any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now be taking public testimony, and so is there anyone that would like to comment on this agenda item over this public hearing, which would be for the schools, bus barns, and Glorieta Bay's proposal for storage facilities? Okay. All right. Not seeing anyone. And so with that, is there any procedural questions, council, that you need, that you would like to raise at this time? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing at 7:50 PM. And council, you have, you have a motion to make, and also with modified conditions of approval, and then from there, you'll have an ordinance that'll need to be read.
I move the city council adopt the ordinance provided in March 20th, 2018, in staff memorandum to the city council to amend the zoning map from industrial park IP to light industrial LI as proposed by the applicant. And I move the city council approve, as modified, the request for conditional use, site plan review, and property line adjustment applications. The proposed modifications include the items that were presented to us on the desk that we all have in our packet.
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made in the second, third, and fourth, and any discussion?
She gets a sixth, we don't have to vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Now the ordinance needs to be read.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map, by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for unaddressed parcels, Lynn County assessor's map number 11S-03W-18BA, tax slots 1103, 1104, 1105, and map number 11S-03W-18BD, tax slots 432, and 501.
Move the ordinance a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map, by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings for unaddressed parcels, Lynn County assessor's map number 11S-03W-18BA, tax slots 1103, 1104, 1105, and map number 11S-03W-18BD, tax slots 432, and 501.
Move to adopt the other ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Okay. Thank you. So, long time you've been waiting to get those new bus barns, so.
Yes.
Yes, that's great. Thank you, Russ and Candace. With that, a quasi-judicial decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after decision becomes final. Within five working days following adoption of an amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted text and findings, and notify the department of any substantial changes which may have occurred in the proposal since any previous notification to the department. Okay. All right.
For the record, the pronunciation of the name of is Lotus, not Lattes.
Lotus.
Lotus.
Not Lotus. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, okay. Next is, we have another public hearing, and this one is over our transportation system development charges. And with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Okay. Ron?
Good evening, again.
And this begins on page 286.
So, this past May, council considered a change in our transportation system plan at the intersection of Gibson Hill Road and Crocker up in North Albany. The change back in May was to convert the intersection improvement from a roundabout, which is what council previously discussed at the intersection, to a traffic signal. So the original roundabout project in the TSP had a cost estimate in $2,010 of 1.2 million. The traffic signal that council directed us to look into had a cost estimate of $410,000. So there's $790,000 difference. So the action before you deny is to take that $790,000 of SDC money, transportation SDC money, and redistribute it to five other projects, or what's in the packet. Of those five projects, two of them involve projects that the city council has previously committed financial participation to. So those are two projects up off of Somerset Avenue, near where the new school's supposed to be cited, and where there's a development application. So some of the $790,000 has already essentially been committed. At least financial participation has been committed. The five projects that would receive SDC money, some portion of the $790,000, would be Somerset Avenue up in North Albany, near, not North Albany, but up off of Timber Ridge Road by the school site, a piece of Knox Butte Road, a section of it that is just west of the roundabout at Timber Ridge, that's also one that has a contractual obligation or some city participation, a piece of Knox Butte Road to the east of that same roundabout, a section of Goldfish Farm Road just south of Dogwood Avenue, and a section of Crocker Lane up in North Albany. So those are the five projects that would get some piece of that $790,000, and exact amounts are listed in your memo. So, you know, at that point, I'll stop. I know there, well, I won't stop exactly. I know there's been some discussion about whether or not we should revisit the idea of the roundabout versus a signal in North Albany, and that would have, if you choose to do that, some financial impacts regarding projects and schedules. So if you start to discuss those options and would like some input into that, I'm grateful for that.
Okay. All right. Questions, Ron?
No, just, it's, I'm going to tilt windmills, I've done that before, but I do fund, I still fundamentally disagree with council action on changing the recommendation from a roundabout to the stop signal. And I know it's, I know this is going to pass, there's no question about it, but just, I still strongly believe in it enough that I am going to vote no on it, so it'll go 5 to 1, I'm sure.
Yeah, Rich?
Actually, I just needed to notify, the portion of Goldfish Farm Road that is being talked about having money moved to it, strangely enough, a guy shows up there who lives in the local area, asking about something entirely different, so he has issues with the county in that area, with the people who are making noise next to, and he wanted to know if I could do anything about it. I explained that was in the county, not in the city, and et cetera. So I did have communication with someone in the area. It didn't have to do with this, so, just to set the record straight.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. With that, is there anyone that wanted to comment or testify on this transportation system development charge methodology? Methodology change, there is one person that signed up, but I don't know if maybe it was on the right hearing signup sheet, and it was Catherine Domingo?
Wrong sheet.
Wrong sheet. Okay. All right. Thank you. Was there anyone that wanted to comment on this public hearing? Okay. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing then at 8:00 PM, and that would be for the two STCs on that. Okay? Ron, anything else? Okay. Nope. All right. Council, you do have a resolution that's on page 289, and you have one that's on page 311.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution as stated on page 289.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Windmill vote.
Okay. All right. And next one, resolution on page 311.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the resolution as stated on page 311.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. Motion carried. Okay. All right. We made it through those public hearings quickly. Next is business from the public, and I know we have several folks here that were at our last meeting, too, and probably if they're wanting to comment at all about our second reading of our ordinances over the prohibitive camping or the enhanced law enforcement area, the motor vehicle parking and abandoned vehicles. We did receive testimony. If there was any new information that anybody wanted to bring forward to us, this would be a time to do that. So, yes. Okay. Carol?
So you're not going to extend the public hearing for the actual ordinances?
For the ordinances, this would be, it's not a public hearing. It's for business from the public that can come up and testify.
Do I mean when we get to the ordinances? You're not going to allow people to talk on that?
No, they can do it now, at this time.
Why not when we talk about the individual ordinance?
Dick, we have always done this. When it comes, we've already had the first reading, this is the second reading.
Yeah, and I've always disagreed with it.
But this is the time to come up at business from the public.
So anybody out here wants to talk about any of those four ordinances, now's the only time you get to talk about it. You all understand that? Okay.
They do. Yes. Carol?
Hi, Carol Davies. I'm at 224 Sherman Street Northeast. I did speak at the last hearing, and I do have an update. My neighbors and I went around to our immediate neighborhood gathering signatures for the petitions, which I believe you have in front of you. We were very short on manpower, and we only did a very small part of the planned enhanced enforcement area. So with those two shortcomings that we had, we were very easily able to gather approximately 100 signatures in favor of both of these ordinances. I just wanted to share with you a little bit on what some of the people who had signed the petitions have had to say about it. What I found most striking of all was that every single person who I spoke with had personal experience with a crime that had been committed against them. I'm talking every single person. The majority were thefts, lots of thefts, whether it be something, a small item or larger items, breaking and entering into vehicles. Trespassing was another huge issue. People breaking into homeowners' backyards and either causing vandalism, or sleeping there and leaving trash. And it was just really striking to me that the problem was so widespread, and it's so much more widespread than I had ever anticipated it to be. So I once again urge you all to please vote in favor of this ordinance. I also would like to make a suggestion for a future date, and this is also echoing what I have heard from other property owners, and that's that these two ordinances don't go far enough. There isn't, there aren't quite enough teeth in the ordinances, and we would like to have more done. They would like to see more police patrols, and just a lot more police presence in the area to try to cut down on the crime. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Okay, sir, any? Okay, is there anyone else? Yes.
My name is Doug Laramie. I live at 1205 First Avenue East, and I've prepared a few remarks, so I stay on subject. My wife and I have lived at 1205 First Avenue East for the past 12 years. Some of our neighbors have been in the neighborhood for 40 years or more. We have a very close-knit group of neighbors that talk, share ideas, and encourage each other in our group and individual activities. When we moved into our house, we knew that the area didn't have the best reputation in Albany, but the house was cute and affordable. What we didn't know was that the people next door were drug dealers. The late-night visits for five minutes in the front yard and the noise and profanity made it abundantly clear what was going on. In addition, the young man of the house two doors down was a well-known local thief, who had an impressive criminal record, and was a frequent customer of the drug dealers. Finally, after calling the police enough times, the drug dealers moved out, but not before I had been assaulted by the thief, and there was gunfire because of a drug deal gone bad. Since these regrettable incidents, the increase in value of property in the city made many of the more rundown properties in the area attractive to those interested in fixing things up and living in the neighborhood, or using the properties as investments. People started picking up trash, cutting back overgrown yards, and rehabilitating houses. In one instance, an entire block was converted from a rundown trailer park to respectable low-income housing. The neighborhood started looking better, and the momentum to bring the area to a higher standard seems, seemed to feed on itself and grow. My wife and our neighbor Lila conceived of and partnered with the Albany Parks and Recreation to turn a vacant lot into the Willamette Community Garden, which has been a resounding success. The garden not only gives residents the opportunity to grow healthful food, but has contributed thousands of dollars worth of first-class organic produce to Fish of Albany to feed the hungry. The garden dedicates a significant percentage of its area to this purpose. There are strawberries, broccoli, squash, and tomatoes grown outside the garden, available to all, in addition to the donations for Fish. We feel a great deal of pride and satisfaction in sharing our love of gardening, not only with the city and our neighbors, but those less fortunate and in need. The significant investment in time, money, and a great deal of sweat equity by the residents and the city has made this possible. Some fear the ordinance under consideration will unjustly target and unfairly impact the homeless in Albany. However, being homeless and down on your luck does not make one a criminal. The ordinance states that there must be multiple convictions of criminal activity to warrant any additional action. There is also a safeguard in that a judge is the final authority, not the police. We bear no grudge against the homeless, as witnessed by our commitment and our continuing efforts to support local food programs. Our patience is wearing thin with the criminals, as I'm sure is true of the honest homeless, since they can also be victims of crime, and possibly more so than others due to their circumstances. In short, we feel we have made a significant contribution to our city. Now, we are asking the city for some help. Despite the improvement, we still have a problem with drugs and crime, and the city police have requested additional authority to deal with the much higher-than-average incidents of criminal behavior in our area. We urge the council to enact the two ordinances in question regarding an enhanced enforcement zone and a prohibition of camping on public property. We feel both ordinances would help protect the significant efforts we have already put forth. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Doug. Yeah, okay, Jeff?
Hello, I'm Jeff Blackford, 804 Broad Albin. I'm the executive director of Chance Downtown. I would encourage the city council to either vote no, or at least postpone the vote on this ordinance until more information or solutions can be found. This ordinance creates an exclusionary zone and does not address the behavior, but simply moves the problem to another neighborhood in Albany. If someone is charged with their third strike, and it is due to drugs, alcohol, or mental health-related issue, this ordinance is not helping to solve the issue, but it is blocking them from needed resources. We all know mental health crises do not have a clock. Crises can happen at any time, and crises, a crisis does happen when necessary resources, like stable housing, food, and employment are not met. If someone is charged with their third strike, and they are banned from the zone, have you addressed the behaviors? No, they will just continue to seek drugs, alcohol, and commit crimes in other areas of town. Do you wanna just move the problem, or can we address the problem? Let's offer the resources. As Chance, we are proposing a program called Help Thy Neighbor. A peer-support case manager can engage with City of Albany Police, Lynn County Sheriff's, and the court systems. The people that the courts deemed needing support, we can work with the individual and help them earn support. Have the ability to give back to the community they once took from. We wanna offer our peers the ability to have pride of the community, to have stable housing and employment, and be able to be a productive member of the community. We want to connect our neighbors and the residents of Albany that need some help cleaning up their yard and neighborhood, or a business owner who needs help cleaning up the path by their building, or maybe cleaning up under the bridge, city parks, and helping at the community gardens. If we have someone in the program that is required to do community service, we can oversee case-managed community service hours and build partnerships and create community pride. Instead of excluding people, let us try to support people to make positive life choices by addressing behaviors. Let us help people find the resources like housing, food, healthcare, and employment that they need. Let us connect people to community and help them look forward to being part of something bigger than themselves. While we have a lot of work to do and to accomplish, we can start having conversations around how to achieve the goal, the logistics around funding the program. This option can reduce jail debts, and court time, and officers' resources. This will save the city and county money, but it also offers a solution to help residents in all of Albany in support around cleaning up the neighborhoods, parks, and trails. But it also gives an offender to change their life. Let us support them as being part of the great city of Albany in a positive way. Let's be the leaders that other communities can learn from. Let's make the right decisions for all the residents of Albany, not just certain areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I'm glad, I mean, I'm glad to hear that, to have our social service agencies to wanna get out and be more proactive in really addressing, you know, the behaviors that we have seen in our community. But I do think it's essential with these ordinances to have them in place to be able to give the encouragement to folks that are having those behaviors, to encourage them to work with our agencies. But also, with the agencies too, we, we have been doing a lot of those proactive measures. We need to be more proactive, but it always comes with a cost, to be able to enhance services, and that's the challenging piece. That doesn't solve our problem today, when we still have the cost factor over our heads. But I do like hearing about getting more proactive to help with, you know, with, with the problem of the amount of waste that our Parks Department and our Police Department, Street Department has to pay for, you know, constantly, weekly, cleaning up camps and, and the mess that is left behind. Because when, you know, when you have, when you have more that is individuals that are being enabled to live outdoors, it comes with a cost, and it gets shoved on the City of Albany to clean it up. And I think it needs to be everybody to step up to the plate and start helping to fund, you know, the cleanup cost. But if we're able to change those behaviors, that's gonna reduce the amount of cleanup costs that we will be seeing. But I do think these ordinances are one to be able to give that push, and to be able to help encourage individuals to be able to work toward, work with the agencies to change their behavior on that. Okay, thank you, Jeff, then on that. Yes, sir. And then the lady in the back.
My name is Bill Orman, and I live at 734 Baker Street, and I'm representing the folks that live in that, that neighborhood. I'm one of those individuals who's lived in that neighborhood for 40 years, and has seen many, many changes in that neighborhood, some good, some bad. I have provided you, the council, with graphic proof, photographs, and pictures, and videos of the activities that we witnessed down at that end of Baker Street. I can assure you that everybody on Baker Street has experienced some sort of crime, some, some major discomfort, some of the things that we've seen down there, and we strongly urge you to pass these measures. We have great sympathy for the homeless, but some of the homeless just do not want help, will not seek help. Well, you know, you can provide them all the help in the world, they won't take it. I cannot tell you how many times we find these gray blankets lying everywhere. They just give it to them, they're free, they know they can go get more, so they just go get more. The ducks in the canal are probably 10 pounds heavier than any other ducks in the area from the free bread that, that is given to them, what people just take down and throw into the canal. Honestly feel that those homeless people who seek help will find the help. Albany is real generous, I think, in that regard. Many agencies and places they can go to seek to find help, but the crowd that we seem to be dealing with, they don't wanna go there. They don't want to, you know, they don't want to make use of the services. And I just feel that if we make it easy for them to get there, if we tolerate their behavior, it becomes the norm, and we'll just encourage more, and more, and more, and more. And so, I strongly urge to, that this council has taken steps to do all they can to try to, you know, keep the situation under control and try to make a better neighborhood for all of us to live in. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna thank you, Bill, too, because you have been very proactive in really trying to be able to address some of the issues of homelessness, and mostly living along the canal, you've seen it firsthand, and, you know, I've heard from Bill over the years, too, when they, when he finds somebody along the canal, and they, you know, they look like they're deceased, and he's had to call, you know, for emergency, you know, help, to be able to help individuals, but...
Yesterday, somebody landed there yesterday. The neighbors got together, we all went out and checked to see if he was alive or dead.
Wow.
And what do you do? I mean...
Yep.
And then there was a debate on whether he was or was not.
Oh, wow, wow. I'll never forget the story, though, was the person that thought was dead, and ended up, when the paramedics came, he was in such bad condition from living out in those elements that he had maggots eating his feet. So, from that, being able to, that, we had to decommission an ambulance, and also the hospital had to decom, you know, commission some rooms in trying to be able to address that issue. And that's a part of when they're able to be able to just live outdoors and be able to live in that lifestyle, it's very sad to see that, you know, happening, happening to an individual. And, and also, the, the amount of cost that comes with that, too, for all public safety and our healthcare, to have to be able to deal with it on that, so, very sad. But, thank you, Bill. Yeah. Okay, yes, and the lady in the back.
Okay, so, I did not prepare, 'cause I wasn't aware of the meeting until just a little bit ago, but I wanted to come and share some...
Name and address.
Oh, Elisha Exton, 1130 Northeast Front Avenue. So, we are right next to the community garden. We're right at a section where our home is completely exposed to the trail, and the trail is not exposed to the road. So, we've seen some things. My husband and I bought a home right around six months ago and moved our four kids in there, and we've been renovating the home. In that time, in six months, we have had people sleeping on our property, in the back of our property, going down like a four-car driveway around my eight-year-old daughter's window, through our back gate, behind our garage, and sleep in our greenhouse, where they have left drug paraphernalia, gun magazines, garbage. They have gone to the bathroom in the buckets back there. We have had people go through our garbage and hang it on our fence, and string it all around our driveway, right outside my kids' windows at night. My son had people tapping on his windows in the middle of the night, so he was afraid to sleep in his room. We had a man who came out of the bushes, wearing almost nothing. After my mom had taken my two younger kids up to the house, I was watching through the dining room window, and my old, one of my older sons was still out there, and he's in middle school. This man climbed out of the bushes onto the trail and called him down to the trail to ask him who all was moving in. Who is in your family? Who, how, you know? And, you know, these things are just ridiculous. We had people living across in the bushes. One man would ride up on his bicycle with a face mask and a wig on, like he had just robbed a bank, and sunglasses, and he threw some rage fit one day and broke apart furniture, just screaming and swearing in the middle of the trail, right in front of my house. My friends called the police. We've had, oh gosh, so many experiences, I'm trying to think of all of them. We've had people in the middle of the day, sleeping in the bottom of our yard, storing backpacks. They'll walk just past the open part of our yard, and I'll see their backs in front of Carol's house, and they'll shoot out back there and throw their needles in her garden. And I see kids riding down there alone, on their scooters and bicycles, and right now, we're looking at putting up a privacy fence. My dad came down for a weekend when we first moved in and saw who was going by, and their interactions, and how they were watching my children, and mean-mugging my parents, and we had all kinds of problems. And so, he said, after two days of being there, I'm paying for a privacy fence for this entire property. So, we went to the city planning commission, we spoke with the fire department, we got approval to have six-foot fencing all the way around. So, now, it's like, now that it's all covered, what's gonna happen when it's totally covered, and instead of people just having to scoot behind Carol's fence to shoot up and do the things that they're doing, they'll have that whole section where these kids are riding their bikes through here? This is ridiculous. I have had to get a dog, my husband and I have discussed being carrying a weapon while I'm at home during the day. It's just too far. It's gone too far. And I am not asking people, you know, as far as people getting worried about homeless people being harassed. I have no problem with somebody being down on their luck. My husband broke his back many years ago, we've hit some hard times. But I expect people to follow the same laws that we follow, and that's no trespassing, you don't litter, you don't sleep on other people's property, you don't do drugs in public and throw your needles in people's yards. I don't think this is too much to ask. And if there are people that want help, there is a myriad of programs out there. I mean, Albany is, like he was saying, a very cush place to be homeless, honestly. And I feel like, at this point, there is just so many people that, as he said, do not want help. These people, these people scare me the most. A man sleeping in my yard, and I let my dog out, I bought a guard dog, he's a big boy, and he's a scary boy, and he stays in his yard, he has not attacked anyone or left his yard, people can run by on the trail with their dogs, he doesn't go down, but if somebody comes into my yard, he goes barreling down there. And a man came to sleep in my yard, the guy looked at him, shushed my dog, took a nap, got up, threw his trash in the bushes, and then left. I mean, there's no regard, and that, to me, is the most dangerous thing, is when people have no regard. And at this point, after considering many times just throwing in our hat and moving, 'cause we don't want our kids down there, I, I just think it's so sad. It's a beautiful area, it's a wonderful place to have that walking path, there's new homes coming in. How many of those people are gonna have these experiences and say, chuck it, I don't want this? I really think that these ordinances could help. Yes, some of the problems have moved, maybe we need to make it citywide, maybe, maybe that's a thing, but this isn't a matter of making people who are homeless uncomfortable. This is a matter of making every citizen follow the same laws that we are expecting to follow. And if it takes extra enforcement for my kids to... And if it takes extra enforcement for my kids to be safe, I think it's worth every penny and all that time, and it's worth all of it. So that's what I have to say.
Well, thank you.
Do you see any patrols on the path down there, can I ask?
I, you know, I don't see them very often. I know I've had to call the police many times for different things. I've spoken with Chris Shendell several times.
And if they don't come around and patrol the place, it doesn't do much of any good.
Well, and what I'm told is, there's just not enough resources. And I spoke with Chris, and he was saying, you know, during the summertime, and I'm telling you, it goes from, I don't know, I would say maybe 20% shady people on the trail during the winter. During the summer, it's at least 50%. And they go out once a week is what they have funding for, to my knowledge. And in that one day a week, he said they'll arrest between five and 14 people in that one day on the trail. I mean, if they were out there every day, they would be busy all day. When I called, one day I called because there was a man that was acting really strange. He looked like maybe he was on heroin or something, tucked his backpack away in my property and was kind of wandering around. And I called the police, and they came down, and they didn't see him and said, well, we'll go look around. Walked, I don't know, 50 feet up the trail to the end of Carol's yard, and found another guy who had a warrant out for his arrest, and just arrested him and said, I'm sorry, we have to come back. You know, they were there for a minute and a half, and they found somebody to arrest. I seriously would support more police action over there. Just a presence could push people away.
That's one of the problems with a trail that's not set up for vehicular traffic. Very, very difficult to patrol. And that's where a lot of problems occur. And I talk about this, and I talk about it, and I never get any leverage on it. So, that's one of the problems.
Well, and I'm told that there is an ATV that they use. I haven't seen it yet.
It's a Gator.
Yeah, which, I mean, I would think that that would be a good way to get around on the trail if you've got officers on those. And having them on foot, I think, is really important, because the last meeting I had with Chris Shendell and some representatives of the community garden, and some of our neighbors came, we walked around. It took us a couple minutes to find a homeless camp. But you have to walk back into the bushes and see.
Right. And the Gator does patrol, like Bryant's Park and all the way up into Simpson Park, which has been a valuable tool for the police to have, you know, once they're able to, you know, they're able to reach the camps faster, but have found that some of the folks that are hiding can hear the Gator coming.
Yeah.
And then they know how to hide. But I have experienced, I've been out on the Gator, and each time, they've just been cleaned out of camps, and soon as, it was one time, four days later, already camps were setting up. And it's a continual, you know, problem to be able to try to. But our police department stays on top of it very well, but it's a continuing, you know, maintenance.
Apparently not by her yard, they don't.
You know, and that's the thing, is it's like, I realize they're making an effort wherever they can, but I think that there's just not as much as is needed. There's just not.
Well, and, you know, and we have, you know, 53,000, you know, residents in Albany, and for the amount of patrols, it's hard to reach everywhere. But that's why I think it is essential on being able to get these ordinances, to have another tool to be able to help your neighborhood. So I'm so sorry for what you're having to experience, and we will see what we can, you know, hang in there, don't move away.
We're trying.
Yeah, but yeah, but no, we will really try to see what we can. And that's what we're here for, is we want a safe city, and that's what we're trying to be able to, you know, be able to get the ordinances in place, that the tools that our police department needs to have that safe city, so, and a livable city.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, uh-huh, Jim?
I'll be quick. I promise. Jim Jansen, I live at 804 Broad Alvin Street in Albany. I had two statements. First one was the prohibitive camping. That does not have anything to do with the private property that has nothing on it down there, right? Is that what I understand?
Well, private property, nobody can be camping on private property for any, like, length of time. So, and I think, Marilyn, do you have the current rules on, for private property? I mean, we don't, sometimes like having, allowing tents in backyards and people to use it as living conditions, you know?
Right. Well, this is, I'm thinking about that area that's just east of the park, that's private, but they set up the camps in there. I've been on the trail before and seen them on there.
Yeah, which park?
The one that's off of Geary.
Bowman?
Bowman, yes.
Uh-huh.
And that's, there's constantly somebody there, but.
So somebody's house?
No, that's that vacant lot that used to be a mill or something like that.
Semwood property. Oh, the Semwood property. And that's continually, the police department's always going out there and enforcing that.
Well, and that's trespassing. It has nothing to do with camping.
Yeah.
That's just trespassing.
Yeah, that's the thing, is we can't do anything about that as far as the police are concerned, then, unless they call on it, right?
Right, they do get a no trespass order, so they can't enforce it.
Got it. Okay, and the other thing, the enhanced law enforcement area, how was that determined when everybody that's spoken here has been in the Hackaman District and not in the Montieth District? So everything east of Lyon Street is an issue, but where the services are is in the Montieth area. I mean, that's.
So it was identified by, this area is 20% of Albany's crime, so that's why it was set for this zone.
So all that area, downtown and the hospital and all that, is part of that 20% where everything I've heard today and the last meeting was all down on that whole area down there by the park and First Avenue and everything in that.
We get the complaints in the Montieth District, too, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and some of the signatures that were handed out was from the Montieth District.
Because I just don't see it where I'm at, and I'm, they're constantly, and so that would eliminate part of the area and be able to have them focus more on the area of problem, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anyone else over the ordinances, yes?
Hi, I'm Reverend Amber Churchill. I'm a member of First Christian Church in Albany, and I'm at 3220 Tudor Way, southeast. So I've read over the, I think I read over the proposal, and I hear all of the concerns that are lifted this evening. And being someone who doesn't live in that particular area, I'm going to trust the experiences that have been spoken, the different concerns and the fear and anxiety that has come forward from some families about their safety of their family. I'm going to trust that. And, yeah, I have a question. So in looking at the strategic plan of the city, it says that one of the goals is to have a humane and diverse organization. And I'm just wondering, in the midst of creating an ordinance, where is the piece that honors diversity and protects individual rights for those in our community that are struggling with houselessness? I think that we need to be part of a solution. The solution needs to include cleaning up our neighborhoods and making sure that families feel safe and feel like they are welcome. But we have a lot of other people who are struggling to feel that way as well. We have a lot of people who are struggling to have their own voices heard because they don't have houses, because they don't have access to appropriate and affordable mental health care services. We don't have any detox facilities in this city yet. It may be coming, but not right now. So I, too, would urge the council to either vote no, or, more importantly, to have the conversation continue, postpone the vote, so that a conversation could include pieces about restorative justice. If we are working for individual rights within our full community, those who are experiencing houselessness and housing crisis need to be part of our conversations as well. And so I'm wondering, were people who are affected by the skyrocketing housing costs in this area, were they included in this conversation? Were representatives from the homeless community included in ordinances to hear what they say? I don't know what it's like to live in that area, and so I'm not trying to diminish the pain or the fear that those families feel. I just think the ordinance is a little one-sided and a lot of law and order, and less about creating a humane and diverse community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I do want to remind folks, I mean, if somebody is homeless, they're not going to be arrested. It's if they break the law, then that could happen. So it's just, we want everybody to abide by the law. But in other words, somebody can be homeless, but they're not going to be arrested unless it's, you know, something that's breaking the law. Okay, anyone else that wanted to speak? So, yes, sir, and then Liz.
Connor Lyons, 4045 Dunlap Avenue, Northeast. Thank you for having me. I would like to know what considerations are being given to protect access to services for low-income individuals that are in the area, as well as to the central services like the hospital, like the fire department, and that such.
Right. With that, we have many services throughout the community if somebody is homeless, and that is something that I could go on all night and let you know. So I could, I'd be willing to meet with you and let you know of all the agencies that we do have. But we do have two shelters, you know, we do have a lot of social service agencies like Chance. We have a lot of transitional housing providers.
Is Chance in the area?
Yes, they are, uh-huh.
So how will people be able to access that if they have been convicted of three?
So if they are, say, committing a crime in this zone, the court system, the judge can allow them to go to certain social service agencies. So that can be a part of their court order.
So, but they would have to come to the court, which is also in the area, is that correct?
Right, yeah, but they would not have any problems with that.
But can you see that there might be an intimidation factor? Also, perhaps somebody would find themselves a victim of a crime, perhaps a violent crime, something more serious than camping, but feel chilled to contact emergency responders because they don't want to be put back into the system. What considerations have been given towards that sort of situation?
Well, I guarantee there's already probably individuals that already feel that way already, so without these ordinances. So these are just.
But they would be potentially criminalized, correct?
And, no, they wouldn't. They don't need to commit a crime, so when it comes.
But if they already have, and then they become a victim, is my question.
Well, if they've already committed a crime, they're already into the court system already.
But now they're not in jail, perhaps they've completed their sentence, but here's an additional sentence of being banned from public.
No, because they wouldn't be, they would need to commit another crime, so it's.
But if they have, but if they have committed all crimes, they have the three.
So once the ordinance is enacted, it would be three crimes within a six months before they would be excluded from this area.
Okay, but if that did happen, they commit those three crimes that they're convicted of in six months, they would be illegal to go to the hospital to attend to social services?
No, it's not in the area. The hospital's not in the area.
It is not, but what about if they wanted to go to Chance?
They could still go to Chance. That can still be a part of what the judge can allow them to access those agencies. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of kind of like more whatevs that's trying to put some barriers on this. I really, I think that, you know, we can always review, ordinances can always be changed again. We can always review this at a later date and see how it's working, if it's working or if it's not working, and we can always, you know, rescind it.
So what would be considered a working? Would it be that those people move to different, that wouldn't be potential targets of this law? Would they be, the success be considered that they have moved out of other communities?
No, well, we would hope that they would work with the agencies so they can be able to move towards getting into housing, or at least change their behavior on that.
Have you communicated with the judges to find out what their views are in terms of what they would consider to be an allowable?
The judge will follow what the order, the judge will follow whatever order there is. So, and the judges, they have that discretion, too, so. But I think we can sit here and go back and forth tonight, so I think we're best to, I'd be willing to meet with you and kind of address your, the whatevs.
But do you plan on voting tonight?
Mm-hmm, right.
So if you want to make it the law before these questions have been fleshed out, is my concern.
Well, no, I think you have some questions there, but I think it's, we have already addressed all of that already, so.
But in the purpose of the public hearing for the citizenry to hear their.
Right, and that's what we're doing. So we're hearing your concern, and, but you're kind of, you're kind of going back to the same question that we're already addressing, so, on that.
Okay, so, thank you for your time.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I encourage you to vote.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And it was Connor, what was your last name?
Ly, L-Y-O-N-S.
Okay, all right, thank you, Connor.
Liz Irish, 724th Avenue, Southwest. I kind of live in both worlds. I work in Dave's building on the northeast side. We call the police a lot. We have locks on our bathroom doors because of homeless. We see a lot of what goes on on the path. We have binoculars, because it's pretty fun to watch sometimes, unfortunately. So I believe what everybody's saying on the northeast part of town. I will say, Fourth Avenue, which is right by the water treatment plant, we don't have those issues. So I am a little confused why our side is considered in that. I think that maybe a little more discussion should happen before we go to a vote. That's what I'm going to urge you to talk about. I think the community, some of the communities are a little letty's. It would probably be better if we had some citizens and some community leaders that talked to the police and maybe try and come up with some alternatives. I do think there's a problem. I know there's a problem. I watch it every day out of my office window. But I'm not sure that this first rush to judgment is the best option, and I can't think anything but communication is the answer here. Communication between services and people and talking, just to be sure that we're doing the right thing. Because the last thing we would hate to happen is that people feel alienated and alone, and they're unable to get services. And the hospital is in that area. Services are in that area. And if the homeless feel like they can't get help, that's a problem. We don't want there to be a misconception. So I am not against this. I'm not against enhanced enforcement. I've witnessed it with my own eyes. I've requested additional locks in the building I work in. But there isn't just a one-size-fits-all. Why don't we have some of the people in the community come together and have some discussions before we rush to just vote on this? That's all I'm asking.
And I think, as I mentioned to Jeff, too, is I think that is kind of something that I would encourage that we do, you know, have this conversation. Because we've had people that have come forward and are passionate about, well, let's all work together. But I think it can still work with as a side piece to getting, and also with the ordinance is taking place, too. Because in this way, we can be able to start working with changing the current pattern that's been taking place on that. Also, the hospital is not in the zone.
Is it just outside of the zone, then?
Yeah.
Is that how it works out?
On that, yeah.
I don't know that anybody's going to differentiate that at first glance. I think that needs to be communicated. Maybe there's a way to communicate through the community before we just pass the law. It just seems like the right to do to include some of the community leaders and have a little more discussion about it. I do agree there's a problem. I watch it. It's sad, and it's horrible. I watch them pull the blankets out from underneath the building next to Dave's building. There is an issue, there's no doubt about it, and I can't imagine living in the northeast part of town. It must be really rough. But let's talk a little more about it. Let's see if there's some other options in some other areas that aren't necessarily inclu- included in that area.
I just think we do have an obligation to, you know, the citizens that are dealing with, the neighborhoods that are having to deal with this behavior. And as we know, is when we do pull community, you know, resources together and when it comes to meetings to meetings, that could be two, three years down the road before we come up with a solution and a good resolution to things. And I think we have an obligation to really meet the needs of the residents that are really struggling right now in their homes. So we don't want to hear somebody that's wanting to, doesn't feel safe in their home. We want them to feel safe, so. Okay. Is anyone else? Okay? Yes, sir.
Hi, Joshua Stanley, 3500 Lafayette Street, Southeast Albany, Oregon, 97322.
How did you spell your last name?
S.T.A.N.L.E.Y.
That's your last name.
Yes. You brought up a good point that it probably is going to take a lot more than just one piece of the solution, or that maybe this is just one piece of a larger solution. I would like to encourage everybody to think about renter protection measures as a piece of this solution to keep folks from getting driven to homelessness, which is happening rapidly, not only in our own state, but all of our nation.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joshua. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Carol, something real quick? Yeah.
Carol Davies, again. There was, there were a couple of points that I neglected to mention. First of all, with the petitions that were signed, it may not have been readily apparent, but we did go to a number of downtown businesses. And I would say the overwhelming majority said that it's just not going far enough. There is such a huge issue with, with the crimes and problems that are occurring in the downtown businesses. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that a number of those signatures are from business owners in the area. The other thing that I just wanted to touch upon is, I do agree with a member of the speakers who were asking for more time. I personally don't think more time is needed. I do agree with you, Mayor Canopa, that something has to be done to initiate. But I think that broader discussion absolutely needs to be had. There are definite gaps in what we are doing to address this issue. This is just one part of the issue. And I heartily recommend that we look into some of those other solutions. Just as an example, alternative housing for people who don't have homes because rent is too expensive here. So if we can get alternative affordable housing on board, I think that would address a lot of the issues that we are having. So I just wanted to say that also. Thank you again.
Thank you. And I do think this was, you know, by having these ordinances, you know, in our community, there's more awareness. And I think more people are wanting to be a part of a solution. And now that I have a lot of names and agencies there, you'll be all getting a call. And we will be having a meeting and getting together and to see what we can do. So, so I think this has been very beneficial, but yeah. Okay. I think this, I think, did the lady in the plaid, did you have your hand up or not? Or no? Okay. I didn't want to miss you if you did, so, yeah.
My name's Mary Edmonds. I live at 416 Southeast Fourth Street. So I'm representing the Hafelman neighborhood. I've had the same, my family's had the same experiences that you've heard from other people, with trespassing, with things being taken off of our porch. I've worked in a homeless shelter myself in Portland. I'm very sympathetic to the homeless situation in this city. I do think that there needs to be some more discussion, some more dialogue around the issues and the support of the homeless in the community. But we also need to remember the homeowners. We need to be able to protect ourselves and we need to support the police. They're frustrated. We call them all the time and for real things that are happening. Yes, there's a lot that goes on right underneath our nose. The trails are filthy, there's drugs. There's all kinds of things going on in our community that aren't pretty, but we need to be supportive of those individuals. But when someone comes onto my property with a flashlight and is shining it in the basement window at my daughter while she's getting undressed and getting ready for bed, all the lights are on in our house, we're home, there's cars in front, so clearly it was not someone trying to rob our home. It was someone that we chased away that was so incredibly high, he had no idea what he was doing. And I don't feel good chasing him down the street to the next house so that he can do that in another house. We need to remember that the homeowners need to be able to do something to protect themselves too, along with our community addressing the situation and being supportive of the homeless situation. Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah. Okay, is there anything else that hasn't been stated this evening then that you'd like to address? Okay, all right. Yeah, Sharon?
I'm Sharon Geisler, 728 10th Avenue, Southwest. And I had my say last week, so I won't go through the whole thing. I just, I agree with needing more time with this. And I suppose Amber probably said what I would say in turn. But I have one problem with the ordinance itself. And that is, and you keep referring to crime, but it is actually possible that a person could be excluded on the basis of three, three, what's the word? Their ordinances, they're throwing trash and peeing on the street and that sort of thing. And, and I've been, I've been told that this would never be abused, but I know it could be. It could be. So if somebody wanted, if somebody, if a homeless person were to be targeted, you could probably find them throwing trash and doing those things in a period of time. So, yes, it's crime, but, and, and these are all huge issues. Everyone's, it's huge. But that piece bothers me. I don't like that one, that piece in there. And I too would not so much ask you not to vote for it, but to, to really continue a dialogue and maybe, maybe, maybe not vote on it tonight and continue the dialogue. But there's a lot more to say here.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Okay. I think that's it regarding the ordinances. We're still under business from the public. Is there anyone that had an item that was not a part of the ordinances?
Should we just?
Okay. And then with that, so next on the agenda actually is a presentation.
It was somebody else that wanted to speak.
What's that? Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am. Yep. Was it not on the ordinances or, or the, something else?
It's on the ordinances.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Raquel Miller, 3048 25th Avenue, Southeast. I agree that I think we need to have a little bit more conversations. I think we need to have people who are representative of the homeless community. I'd like to hear what they have to say about this. A lot of times they're really nervous and scared to access resources. I just think this is going to make it even more difficult for them. How are you going to measure the success of the initiative?
Well, that would be by the reducing of the crime in this zone. That would be one measurement of it. But, but also, I mean, in our community, we don't want to enable the homeless to be homeless. We want to get a roof over their head. And sometimes it takes a little, you know, you've got to be able to be more proactive in helping the homeless to get a roof over their head. And that's what we have done in Albany. We've been very successful with that. But it's always changing. There's, you'll never, you'll never eliminate homelessness. There will always be homelessness. So it's just, it's, it's an ongoing and we just try to address it as we need.
Are there any conversations had with homeless?
Oh, I can give you a whole big story. If you can give me your email, I can send you my 19-page report I did, so. And it's kind of a story of what we've done over the years in addressing homelessness.
Can I ask just what some of those conversations are?
Oh, we, we've got many programs. We have our hard board that was established. We have agencies working together. And this is kind of my, I love hearing everybody wanting to get together and mostly agencies to find a solution. But I can tell you many times over my years that I've seen that we get together and everybody gets energized on something and then it comes down to a core group of folks because everybody else after a while just sort of fades away. Our, when we originally, we always have a yearly homeless summit too and, in addressing new issues that come up. Well, the first time we had it, this was back when we shut down Camp Boondoggle, this room was just packed. And we've had some, some years that it's packed. And then other years, this last year, it was just the agencies that showed up. So, and I've seen it many times when it comes to issues. You can get a lot of people, a lot of energy at the beginning, and then they, you know, they start dwindling down. And then all of a sudden, the city is the one still trying to pick up the pieces and to be able to address the issue. So I think the conversation, I'd love, we'll pull as many people together, get the conversation going, but I tell you, I'm going to hold everybody to it. They're going to have to act this time because I don't want it being shoved on the city of Albany to have to be able to clean up, you know, clean up the results to it. Because that's what's happened. That's why we're spending thousands of dollars cleaning up our riverfront, cleaning up our natural areas, and businesses are spending thousands of dollars, so.
But have you had a conversation with the homeless?
Oh, yeah. I could tell you lots of stories. I have many conversations. And I think most people that know me know I've had lots of conversations with the homeless. I've worked one-on-one, I've gotten them jobs and housing, so yes.
Okay. My, my heart does go out to the homeowners. It's terrible that all these things are happening, but not all our homeless are.
I know. It is, it's not, it's not an issue that we all wish we didn't have to be dealing with. But, but we're here to serve and be able to help people. But we want to make sure we're there helping people and not enabling them to harm themselves and we find them deceased around our natural areas, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And you're welcome to get ahold of me and I'd love to meet with you and let you know what all we've done with, in the city, so. Okay. Yes, Emma?
I'm Emma Eaton. I live at 1638 First Avenue East. I have listened respectfully to everybody's views and I thank you for doing that as well. I know this is not an easy issue. I respect that. I'm fighting for some kind of, just a step in the right direction. I applaud everyone that wants to talk and work together. We as citizens, homeowners, homeless, agencies, have a responsibility to work together and to hold each other accountable. The more you show up, the more happens. I'm certain you would appreciate that as well. You show up every week, but we don't. I know that. I'm learning that. So I applaud each of you. I thank you for coming and I respect your views.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you. Okay. So I think that's it on the ordinances on that. And we have a presentation and I think this will be very beneficial before we get to the second reading of the ordinances. And this would be from Republic Services.
I haven't looked at the addresses much.
What, there?
I'm talking to the-
Oh, okay. Yeah. So this will be from Republic Services and, and this will be very educational for everyone because it's just very disappointing to see what's happening to our recycling, so.
Good evening. I'm Julie Jackson. I am the municipal manager with Republic Services. And our address in Albany is 1214 Southeast Montgomery. Is that good?
Better.
Better.
No further.
Oh, even more, you know, I have a really big voice, so I had to be careful not to get too close to the microphone.
And I'm John Edmonds and I'm the general manager of Republic Services and I work very closely with Julie.
So we're here tonight to present what I think is a pretty unique set of circumstances, one that we have not ever been in before. Am I loud enough? Now I'm worried about it. That we haven't been in before, at least I've been with the company almost 13 years and we've never been in this situation before. We have, I think you're all aware that our rates are built on the cost of services. And recycling rates have always been built into our rates for residential customers. So along with that, building that in, has always been some commodity payment for the material that we collect. Over the years, we've always received something for those materials. There was a little downturn in 2008 where we thought we might be paying to recycle material, but that was very short-lived. It was about a month long and then it started to rebound a little bit. And I think it just followed what was happening in the economy. We have always weathered the ups and downs of the market. There have been highs and there have been lows with commodities. If you think of what gets recycled as commodities, just like any other commodity bought and sold. For a material to be recycled, somebody has to want to use it. That's just the bottom line. So this purchase-cruelled circumstance, we started talking about as an industry in Oregon in July-ish. And there have been weekly meetings. I've been in, in the room for a lot of those meetings and on the phone for a lot of those meetings with the Department of Environmental Quality, with haulers from around the state, with the processors from around the state, with some government officials as well. There've been representatives from Ron Wyden's office. There've been lots of people in the room. I mean, there are huge meetings, sometimes 50 people in the room and another 50 on the phone. So there have been weekly meetings trying to deal with this current crisis that we're in for recycling. At that time, in about August, we thought we could weather this. And we've been doing that since that time. The commodity price kept going down and down and down. And we expected it to rebound after the first of the year, but that has not happened. It's continuing to go down. So that's kind of the situation we're in. The way that we got there is that China has for years and years and years taken what they're now calling the world's trash. So they have taken material for recycling that has a lot of trash in it. And we've kind of gotten used to letting that material go. You know, it goes away, somebody else deals with it, and we don't think about it. We know now that almost 10% of what's in every cart on average is trash. Another percentage of that is really what we call wishful recycling. And that sort of is, well, I, I think it should be recycled. I want this to be recycled. It's got that little symbol on it, so it must get recycled. And that just isn't the case either. China, this came out with what they're calling the Chinese National Sword Initiative. And I don't know why they named them things like that, but they do. And they are really saying, we have terrible air pollution, we have an unclean environment, and we're tired of taking the world's trash. We want to clean up our environment too. They have thousands of mills where these materials are processed. And some of them are little teeny, really bad places where people work and probably are breathing burned plastic and all kinds of things in. I mean, they're not great conditions. And they're saying, we're going to close all those mills. We're going to, we're going to stick to a smaller number of mills where material can be processed in a healthy environment. So it's really hard to argue with what they're saying, that they've been taking it. About 60% of the world's recycling has gone traditionally to Chinese markets. They kept telling us, January 1st, we're not going to take this material anymore unless you can meet a contamination standard of 0.5%. Now, that material that we send from the curb goes to a processor in Clackamas and they're able to get it down to about point, about 2%. No one really feels that they can get to 0.5%, not with current technology that we have available in Oregon. Some of the things that have happened, the processors have slowed down the line significantly. So they're working longer hours and processing less material. That costs money. Lot, I can answer lots of questions about this if you have them. But the bottom line, I think if you look on the second page of the document that we provided in your packet, is we just sort of broke down, a year ago, we were getting paid $47.68 for a ton of co-mingled material. And now we are paying $58, $51.80. Actually, that was three weeks ago when we put this together. So we actually think it's closer to about $64. Our next invoice will be about $64 per ton. So we haven't seen the bottom yet. We don't have a crystal ball, but what we're learning from DEQ and from the industry and from these meetings is that this is really kind of a recycle reset. This is, we're not going to see the highs anymore, likely. This is, we're not gonna see the highs anymore, likely, and so what was kind of an average or low price in the past may be what the high is going forward. So, all of that said, and just getting to it, we have about a hundred dollar swing in price, we collect about 7,000 tons of co-mingled recycling in the Albany division and you can see that we have a fairly large loss when we look at that amount. So if we just factor that out at, at current prices, and as I said, the, the past five to six months are, are gone and that money is lost. The cost to continue to do what we're doing, recycle at the curb, just as we've been recycling with a huge education campaign, lots and lots of outreach, some of you know Rachel Snyder, our education and outreach specialist, she, I keep saying I need to clone her because we need some more of her, but we know we have to get the word out, we're gonna have to have our drivers slow down a little bit, they're gonna have to be more vigilant about what's in the cart, they're gonna be getting out and tagging carts and letting people know, we can't pick this up because there's too much trash in it. And we think that if we can get people to clean up what goes in the cart, and by cleanup I mean two things, I mean really clean it, so we, our company uses a slogan, empty, clean and dry, and that's really what has to happen. Those of us who recycled, you know, when the truck came around and the driver got out and looked at each item and threw it in the bin and they didn't throw it in, in to the truck if it was dirty, we all knew that we had to rinse things out and so we've kind of gotten away from that with a big cart that has everything thrown together. So we know, empty, clean and dry because food, oils, all of those things that drip out of other containers get on the paper and make the paper very difficult to recycle. So that, so really cleaning it, and then the second thing is, we have to clean up what's in the mix. We have to remove some things that should never have been in there in the first place. I don't know how many of you are aware, because we fight the plastics industry all the time, but all that clear plastic packaging, if you buy cupcakes, if you buy lots and lots of produce things, it comes in that crispy, clear pa, plastic packaging, there's no market for that material and there really never has been. But lots and lots and lots of it goes in the cart because it's wishful recycling. We have said, we have, we send out two newsletters a year, we constantly talk about this, but it, it's hard because people want to recycle it, so we know we have to, to crack down on those things. So we think the, the cost right now, or about three weeks ago, was about $2.22 per household per month. We have rounded that off and what we're asking, that you can see on the next page, we have a couple options for you, to keep recycling what we're, do what we're doing and to develop a more robust outreach campaign so that we can help clean up what goes in. And I think that will be reinforced by the rest of the state because the rest of the state is doing the exact same thing, is about $2 per month. To landfill it, there's still additional cost, we used to get paid for that material, even at the landfill, we have to pay to landfill it. And so, there's some other documents in there, but I will just tell you that Oregon law has something called the Opportunity to Recycle Act. And under the Opportunity to Recycle Act, cities with over 4,000 people are required to have curbside recycling provided. Further down in that act, the law says that recycle, it gives a definition of recycling and it's only recyclable if it costs less to recycle than to landfill. That's the definition in the Oregon state law. So we're well within that boundary to landfill material. Please understand, we do not want to landfill recycling. Our processor, and we're very fortunate, is still finding markets for it, it's just that we're paying them to do that, instead of them paying us for the material. But they're still finding markets, the material we're sending for the most part is getting recycled, it's just become very expensive to do that. Those, oh, I will tell you that, oh, there's a third option and some of you will really like this, but we wanted to give you all the options, so we also included something we've been talking about for a long time and that is adding weekly yard debris so that food scraps can be composted for $4, $4.50 a month. So those are kind of the options. The one thing I will tell you about that is that, that material is processed right here locally, doesn't go to China or even out of the, it goes out of the county, goes into Benton County, I guess I should say that. One of the other things I wanna tell you is some of the other things that are happening around the state, what other cities are doing. So Sherwood, Ashland, Springfield, the cities on the south coast, Newport and Gresham have all increased rates specifically for recycling. The range is about, there, there are varieties, so for example in Sherwood, it's a $1.20 per household, $2.86 for a commercial customer and they're charging $5 for every 32 gallon bag that comes into their recycle center. So they have a staffed recycle center and can do that. It's a $1.90 in Ashland, which is evaluated per quarter, they're expecting it to go up to $2.20 for the second quarter of the year. We, we don't think that a fluctuating rate makes any sense. A 5.9% increase to customers in Springfield and Eugene and Florence are following along soon with that. The south coast is a 5% increase across the board with a $5 charge at the recycle depot. Newport has a $10 charge at the recycle depot and Gresham is instituting $2.50 to $3.10. They have kind of a sliding scale. Washington County just today voted for a $2 increase. City of Portland, Beaverton, Hillsborough and Newport are all expecting increases on May 1. There are a couple of places in southern Oregon where recycling is being landfill as well. So there are a lot of different tacks around the state, but everybody is tackling this issue, so we don't come to you in a vacuum with these questions. Right?
Julie, I think you've addressed this a little bit before, but if landfill dumping
increases, obviously that's gonna shorten the lifespan of Coffin Butte. Has there been working for long-term, 10, 15, 20 years down the road to developing a much larger one, someplace in Oregon that's a regional one? Because obviously, we can't keep dumping our trash in other countries and find those countries and say, sure, we'll take all your trash, we don't care about our environment.
Right, right. And you know Coffin Butte is a regional landfill, I don't foresee ever citing another landfill on the west side of the mountain.
That's what I mean.
It will be, there's a huge landfill in Arlington, there's another one across the river, where's that, Roosevelt, called Roosevelt, it's at, I can't think of where, but it's basically just across the river into Washington. And so when material starts going that far away, it gets very expensive. And that's what will happen eventually. We have about 35 years of life currently at Coffin Butte. If we start adding recycling, remember, not just from this Albany division, but from the Corvallis division, from the Salem division, it starts to impact the life of the landfill as well. And you know, the landfill, I, I always make this point, landfill's not the bad guy. The landfill is handling the waste of all the people who live in the area in a, a way that I'm very proud of, an environmentally responsible way. But if we can protect that airspace, which is kind of what we call the capacity at a landfill, for as long as possible, if we can get better at, you know, what we have to do is stop buying so much stuff, that's what we really have to do. If we can get better at all of those things, you know, it's just a good plan that's all integrated.
Rich?
If everybody and their dog is now having to do something about this because of China, because of all the rest, what's the legislature doing?
So there is discussion at the legislature and we've been involved with that, Republic Services has been involved with some of those discussions, DEQ will ultimately take something to them. The one piece that I think is sort of a silver lining is this, there are recyclers in the United States, there's a plastics recycler, for example, in Portland called Denton Plastic and they handle most of the plastic that comes from the bottle deposit plastics, they do a great job, they can recycle a really wide variety of plastics, but they won't take a curbside stream because it's too dirty. If we can get material as clean as China needs it, then it will start to develop infrastructure in the United States and I think that's a really good thing. There's a lot of talk at DEQ and at Metro about putting money into some studies to see what we can do in Oregon. Oregon's always been a leader in recycling and I think that the feeling at the state level is, hey, maybe we take that a step farther and become a, a leader in processing as well, not just collecting it, but processing it. So I think there is some talk about that, but I don't think there's anything concrete yet and I think that's in the future.
And that's what I think really needs to be encouraged too, is, I mean, I was just so stunned when Julie first told us about, you know, what, what was coming up on the plate was, with China, it was gonna be cutting us off. So we need to, in, in the US, I don't know if it's to be Oregon or wherever, wherever, we need to be processing our own recyclables and find a product that we can be able to use it off of, because we can't keep relying, even if we get it clean to the level acceptable for China, we still can't rely on them forever to be processing our recyclables. So we need to in the US somehow to be able to take that on. So I think whatever we can do to be able to encourage our, you know, either the state level or the national level to really be able to come up with some new innovative ways of processing it, but I think it's so important because it's basically our future and, our future children and grandchildren, so we don't wanna have landfills just filled up everywhere with recyclables.
Right. And one of the things that has been talked about specifically in Oregon is the idea of funding what they call a PERF, which would be a plastic recovery facility. So there is technology that can sort plastic much, to a much higher level than we're able. Oregon plastics are sorted by hand and that has to do with the cost of that technology and the population density that we don't have here. So they, in Los Angeles and in San Francisco, they have the, that kind of technology and so it's, it's optical sorters, it's all kinds of eddy currents and things that happen. And so there is technology that can make sorting better, much, much better, and there is talk, there's some urgency, I think with DEQ and Metro, talking about how to fund a facility like that. And then of course it takes getting all of these, all of the industry together because there's really capacity for one of those in Oregon. So there, and there are about four large processors in Oregon, so there'd have to be some cooperation. Another thing that I just read today was that the metal tariffs that we're all hearing about, so China has now said they're going to impose huge tariffs on any aluminum coming into the country from the United States. So as you know, there's aluminum in the recycling and that will impact that cost. The other thing is cardboard, cardboard's kind of always been our steady eddy, you know, there's been a market, traditionally we process cardboard right here, we used to process it in Albany at the paper mill. But it still goes to a mill in Toledo or one in Longview and we're not, just almost as a reaction to the mixed recycling prices, the cardboard price took a 60% drop this week. So it's all interrelated and as I said, we thought we could weather it because we thought after the first of the year, some of these restrictions would ease up, they got worse. And that's why we're here.
So disappointing.
It is.
Yeah, Bill and Dick?
So the, the contaminants that we keep talking about, one of them that comes to mind is, is on a cardboard box, I mean, everybody's buying stuff from Amazon, it's delivered to the door. What about the tape that seals the box, is that considered a contaminant?
You know, that's a very small contaminant. So we've been working with the processors to come up a, a list of the top 10 contaminants and I was sort of shocked at that list because none of them are things that ever should've been in the cart to begin with. And you'll be shocked too when I tell you what they are, I don't know if I can come up with all 10, but they are things like rope and chain, big pieces of metal, people throw in a bike wheel, for example, and that ruins machinery and it's a contaminant. Plastic bags are a huge contaminant in the curbside stream because the processors use a very mechanized process, so the plastic bags just, they fly around in the air and the facility and they wrap in the machinery and they cause a lot of problems. Another really huge contaminant, and here's the disgusting one, is diapers.
Diapers?
Diapers. So we think there are two kinds of people who contaminate recycling, some who just don't know, some people who just are trying to recycle and they really want things to be recycled and they put them in. Then we know there are the other people who fill up their trash cart and when that's filled, they start putting it in the next cart and, and we think that's kind of where that comes from. And I don't mean just diapers from babies. So our processors are fairly attuned to that and, you know, it's a problem at the facility and I couldn't believe they put that on the top 10 list, but they did.
So back to my box from Amazon.
Yeah, so the tape is a very little bit, because when that paper goes through the process at, at a paper mill, that tape will come off, you know, in that wetting process. And so there is some residue that comes out the back of a mill, but what's coming out the back of the mills right now, it's not just that tape, it's things like water bottles. Water bottles have become so light-weighted that they read like paper in the sorting facilities and so water bottles in the paint, in the cardboard are contaminant. Same thing for shredded paper, shredded paper, it is impossible to get out of the plastic, so it's a contaminant in the plastic. So some of it has to do with, you know, actually bad material, dirty material and then material that just can't be processed, like plastic bags.
So if we shred paper at home, put it into the trash?
Yeah. So all part of the new world order for recycling. We used to say, put it in a bag and it'll be okay, but when you go to these facilities, shredded paper's flying all over too, they just can't capture it. Now, with that said, there are some facilities who shred paper and they're able to keep it source separated and they, many of them will take it. So in Salem, we work with Garden Services and you can drop off shredded paper for them. If you can get it to a place, and we're right now looking at where can we talk to our customers about taking it, if you can get it to a place where it's source separated, it can be recycled because it's kept separate. But the other thing that we need to encourage people to do is, you know, when you get a piece of, a sheet of paper and up at the top it has your name and account number, rip that little piece off and shred it, but recycle the rest. And that way, you don't have to worry about bags and bags of shredded paper.
Wow.
Dick, did you have a question?
I did. Back in the good old days when I had to work for a living, some of us went and examined a factory that was burning burnable trash, up near Brooks. Is that still in operation?
It is still in operation.
Is that a possibility to put in some of the stuff?
It, it is still in operation, it's called Covanta, that's the corporation that owns them. They've been recently going through a process where they were looking at expansion because they're basically full and I think that they have decided not to do that.
I know they generate power.
They generate power.
They eat for the community in the wintertime.
They do. I think there's some controversy, they've had some trouble expanding in other places because of.
Well, I remember this, the one of that too.
Air particulates, yeah.
I think some people that are having to actually recycle stuff complained about the burning.
Mm-hmm.
And it was, I know they do some sorting, or did when we went up there to look at it, because the, they had sorted out and here was a whole pile of band instruments, sousaphone, I think a couple of trombones, trumpets, and apparently some school district said, well, we don't need these band instruments anymore, so, but that's just another side. But I think that may be a solution to a lot of our garbage.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they were burning all kinds of stuff, I remember looking in.
They are.
Here came a bicycle trembling down through.
Yeah. So one of the things that happens though is plastics are one of the things that are not so good to burn, they aren't good for their system, so dumping all the plastics from the recycling back into that system.
I think they have the right scrubbers and so forth.
They do, they do, but they'll tell you that's not the material they want.
Wow.
In Brooks, at least when we've spoken to them.
So Julie, and what, what do you need of the council tonight? Are you needing us to decide on one of these options or get sort of a direction?
We'd like a decision.
Uh-huh, okay. Council, what is your thoughts? You've got options that are on page 322.
Here again, I think we need more discussion here with the public, has to say about it. I know the people I talk to say they're not particularly interested in paying an extra $4.50 just so they can put their garden, or their.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's the only option. I think, I think if you were asking me my suggestion, I'd say that $2 is the best option to continue recycling.
And, and cleaning up the materials better.
And cleaning up the material. Doing a better job and that's on us to talk with people.
Is the council okay?
That's on all of us, actually.
Council okay with that, or?
Not yet.
No?
I need some more discussion, I mean, we, we haven't heard from people on it, you know.
People need to understand it.
Oh, yeah.
When they do, but they need to understand it.
How do we get people to understand it?
Well, part of that is gonna happen right now. Part of that's gonna, also is undoubtedly gonna talk about it some.
You already did.
Well, maybe some more. DH, et cetera.
Yeah.
I mean, that information will get out and then the people who are the, who are the proponents of whichever will bend our ears. I can recognize that you're in a double bind.
They are.
I also recognize that so are they.
Well, and to ignore it just means that rates will go up. Well, and to ignore it just means that rates will go up too.
Yeah. Well, looking, looking down in the short term, I'd say, once we have some information and we need to do something about giving you more money to, so, you know, you don't go belly up when you're trying to get the job done, I would be far more interested in a surcharge than a raise in rates. Surcharge for shorter periods of time because, and let people recognize, they recognize what it's for. And also give the legislature a little time to, or the state, DEQ, EPA, et cetera. While I know they don't work very quickly.
That's an understatement.
Yeah. Well, we all have our stories. I mean, give them a period of time. I mean, what I don't want to see is, oh gee, well, we need two more dollars. And two more dollars goes in and then it just becomes the norm. I mean, it's a specific amount of money for a specific problem that's going to change.
Make it worse.
Yeah. Well, it might, it might not.
It, you know.
Depends whether or not you can get eddy current kind of stuff in a short term, whether you can, I mean, eddy current is something that's around a lot.
And there are eddy currents for metal, for aluminum at the facility, but there's, the technology is old in Oregon, I will say.
Well, and respectfully, we've been weathering the storm for quite some time.
Well, and to that end.
And we've tried to provide you with a lot of, you know, good quality documentation and what other communities are doing.
Could you use the microphone?
Is that one on?
Is it on, community?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I can't hear it.
Okay.
He's got AIDS.
So again, Councilman Olson, yes, we've tried to provide you with a number of different documents and are more than happy to have additional, you know, dialogue if we need to outside, you know, this chamber tonight. But it is really important, this is a call to action. We're not alone, you know, it's an industry-wide problem. And so we're really calling upon all of you to help us, you know, solve this because we don't see it getting any better in the
In the explore, where you can send some or all of it to the garbage burner in Brooks. Will they take more stuff?
No, that's not an option for us. They're not expanding, so they're not taking that.
They're going full blast with?
They're pretty much going full blast, yeah. I actually sit on this Marion County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so I've been listening, hearing those options and they're pretty much both for.
Thanks.
Bill?
So I would like to hear more about how you're going to educate the people. And that's not going to happen tonight. But here's my problem. When you came to us last year and talking about, again, your pitch for the weekly curbside yard waste and gave us some results of a survey that you sent out, I think you, the company, were chastised a little bit about how effective was the outreach, you know, the results when you broke it down, were pretty small margin, so on and so on. I want to have a little more faith and understanding how you're going to reach out to the people to educate them before we approve a $2 a month increase. In fact, at that same meeting, when you were chastised for your efforts, I even remember you looked at me and said, what do you suggest we do? You know, and one of my comments was, you know, when we run for council, we go to door to door and talk to people. Yeah, it takes time, it's not cheap, but I'm not necessarily suggesting that that's the answer. But my point is, I want to know more about what Republic's going to do in terms of outreach in such a manner that indicates, you know, some success. You know, my first thought is, well, let's approve option two and wait for the public outcry. And when they say, well, we can't just fill our landfill, it's like, you're right. I'm glad we got your attention. Let's come up with a solution. But by the way, instead of a dollar a month, now it's going to be $2 a month.
So I think that's a really fair question. And here's what I would say. We, twice a year, we direct mail newsletter with lots of this information. One just went out, in fact, in the fall, that had all the contamination listed in it. We can't make people read them. We do, as I said, we have a full-time employee who does education and outreach. So she spoke to the Rotary Club this week. She talks to all different kinds of groups. But we can't force people to listen. And we really struggle with, how do we talk to people? We use the paper, but not everybody gets the paper. We use a lot of different methods. And so I think that's a fair question. But I think the fact that we have been trying for years and years to talk to people about what goes in the recycling and how to do it right, and the fact that people, a lot of people do and some people don't, and some people just don't care at all, really isn't, I mean, we're handling the waste for all of these people. And some of it's incumbent on those people to either do it right or to pay for the consequences. And I know that's pretty harsh. But I think it is true when it comes down to it. I worked as the recycling education and outreach coordinator for about three years. And I can tell you that I have never talked to so many people in my life and I used to teach high school. So I have talked and talked and talked. And I will tell you that most people kind of hear what they want because they know how to recycle. And we offer a program, we facilitate and pay for a program called the Master Recycler Program. We offer it free in most counties. The county offers it for a fee, but we offer it for free and we train people for eight weeks. We pay our education person to teach this class and take people on field trips, show them the sorting facility. Then we get those people out in the community, we try to help them. So it's very much like the Master Gardener Program. You know, we do, as much as we can do, we send out some emails. But to be really honest with you, talking to people in this day and age is a tough proposition and we are trying to figure out, you know, there are lots of age demographics and like everybody else, we're trying to figure out, how do we talk to those people? And how do we talk to those people who aren't really interested? Those are the ones we really need to talk to. It's not the people who are interested and want to know how to do it right. So it's a tough organization and I'm not sure that we should be penalized for trying when people aren't listening.
Well, we mostly don't want you to have to be spending more resources in additional outreach when we need those resources going towards recycling, so.
So for example, we have screen advertising at the PICS. We're trying to do those kinds of things. We, Rachel's required to meet with at least 5% of the students in Albany every year. So that means she has a certain number of, about 15 classes to go into in Albany every year. There are a lot of programs that are happening that you may or may not be aware of. Last year, we did two brown bag lunches with the city to talk about recycling. But short of browbeating people, I'm not sure what other responsibility we have there.
What if you did away with the home pickup and had regional dump sites, regional recycling?
For recycling?
Right. In other words, instead of just the one down on industrial waste or more
Well, we could do that. It would need to be staffed and we'd have to charge people. And so then what would traditionally happen is people would get a bigger garbage can because they wouldn't use that for the most part, and they'd spend a lot more than $2 a month. So, I mean, in big picture, that's not much of a cost savings to people. If you visited that, our recycle depot on the weekend, you can see that people dump a lot of trash there all weekend long. And that's not wishful recycling, that's just a good place to dump trash.
And again, I don't know what format we'd have further discussions on, but
Right.
I think, what is the end goal? You and I spoke before the meeting that when this program first started, you had a couple of blue bins and you'd fill those. And I'm guessing you didn't have all the contamination that you did
Right.
Now, because it's not, like you said, a second dumpster.
Yeah.
So, all right, if the goal is to have cleaner material, then you go to blue bins. Well, but gee, Bill, that takes more manpower to pick it up. I get that.
Sure.
So how do you get, you know, the citizen to participate in it? You take it away from home, they might throw more away. But on the other hand, what they do take to a regional or neighborhood dump site is probably going to be cleaner. Maybe not, but
Sure.
Those are the kinds of things that might be worth talking about.
Because somebody would be watching it.
Well, not that, not like that, but I'm probably not going to take the time and effort to haul garbage down to a
Not if somebody's there to watch, right.
To a regional collection site. I'm going to throw it away. What I'm going to take down there is, is the stuff that is recyclable.
One of the suggestions has been to go back to that blue bin. Go back to some, a driver getting out and picking it up and sorting it at the curb and only taking the clean material. And, you know, that can happen, but I probably don't need to remind you that our trucks are about $350,000 apiece and that would require probably four new trucks that have those bins again. And where one of our drivers picks up maybe a thousand carts, now they can pick up about half of that getting out of the truck. So, you know, if, I don't know what your goal is. If the goal is to save money, that doesn't get you there. If the goal is to get people to recycle right, I think that does get you there.
Rich?
What percentage of total recycling is cardboard?
I think we, well, you're going to make me do math. You know you shouldn't make me do math. But about 7,000 tons of mixed recycling, about 2,500 tons of cardboard are collected separately in those just cardboard containers. And then, are you asking what's, how much cardboard is in the mix also?
Right. Well, thought process.
I don't know, but it's gone up with Amazon.
We have interim situation. We don't have a problem recycling cardboard. We do have a problem recycling various plastics.
Sure.
What about continuing to recycle cardboard and in the short run, send the plastics to Coff and Butte with a, let's find out what people want to do, thought process behind it? And what would that cost?
I think that's option one. I think that is landfilling and so that's a dollar.
So Rich, you're saying maybe the only product that's recyclable would be cardboard?
The only product that we would continue in the interim
Mm-hmm.
Would be, would be cardboard because that we can still, you know.
So I think cardboard becomes at the curb. You know, part of our problem is that cart with a lid on it. So we know about 30% more recycling went into the cart when we instituted that, that big cart instead of the blue bin that you could see in. So the issue becomes, how do we, how do we police that just cardboard in the cart? Because to me, cardboard is, well, if I can put cardboard in, I can put all the other paper in. It's all paper, right? So
So you don't like newspaper anymore?
I like newspaper a lot, but newspaper is recyclable. But it's not recyclable with cardboard. Cardboard is called OCC in the industry and it goes to a separate kind of mill. You know, all the mills in Oregon used to be newsprint mills and there are very, very few anymore. And they are in the process of gearing up for different kinds of paper. But newspaper goes with mixed paper and that's what's been going to China.
They need to burn it.
Well, the mill we had here was not newsprint and the one in, in
No, but in Newburgh, the SP mill was newsprint and that's where all ours went and that mill closed about five years ago.
Well, I'd hate to see us go back to the dark ages of only doing cardboard. And, you know, I hope that we can, as a community, to be able to continue and be able to, you know, process as much as our recyclables as we can. You know, would it be okay if we held this over to a work session? We can have work session and council meeting, get a final decision
Sure.
In two weeks.
Well, they have a public hearing on it.
Well, and that would be, Dick.
Yeah.
Not a work session, but
But the one thing I would like to
But we can get more, more questions you can have and then we'll bring it to the public hearing.
Every time you get an increase, get the information to us on an email so we can have up to date.
The one thing I would like to add though is, I think if you ask the public, would you like to pay $2 more to get exactly what you've been getting? They're going to say no. I just think that's human nature.
You give them the choice that you gave us. I mean, that's, that's our boss, those folks out there.
Sure.
You give them the choice.
But, but there is a cost here. I just want to make that, I know you understand that, but I'm going to say it for the record. There is an increased cost that is an unusual cost that we couldn't foresee the last time we gave you financial information. And it is impacting us in a huge way. So yes, work session would be fine with us.
I'm really curious though, because I was, I'm glad the citizens that are here tonight to be able to hear this.
Sure.
Because I really think this is very critical in our, you know, in our environment overall. So I'm curious. And, I mean, this is, goes towards if we can carry this over even for a public hearing, it'll give us some sort of feedback. How many here would like to have option one of the $2 per month? Raise your hands.
Option two.
Yeah, option two, the first one, option one of $2 a month. How many here want the putting it to the landfill recycling of $1 a month? And how many want continuing and also to add food scraps for the $4.50 per month?
No.
Okay. So we know actually
How many want to buy a situation?
I mean, this is really a good, you know, way to be able to find out what, you know, citizens want on that. But real quick, if we open up a, if we open up comment, we'll be here probably all night.
Obviously, I want option three, but realistically, option two is probably
You mean option one?
Yeah.
I should have reversed those.
I mean, I mean, this is very helpful because you, because all of you here were able to hear everything firsthand, what the council heard. So I was just really curious to see.
Well, we appreciate the time. It is unfortunate that the market has shifted and we're just trying to be incredibly transparent with all of you and provide you all of the information that we have. And again, we're more than happy to participate in a work session and, you know, another couple of weeks isn't going to, you know, change the course of history, so we're more than happy to wait.
Yeah.
But, you know, we do appreciate at some point a decision on this. Again, we've tried to weather the storm, like I said earlier, as long as we can. And I don't see the situation candidly getting any better in the short term, so.
Well, seeing kind of the poll kind of win is really, majority here was $2 and a good still support was the $4.50. But even if we go out and outreach to the community, they're not going to all know the information that everybody else here just heard this evening too, so, yeah.
We appreciate your time and, and, you know, as I said, this is a circumstance that has not happened. I don't think we've ever come to you under these kind of situations.
Yeah.
But here we are. And we don't want you to think that Albany is weathering the brunt of it. So we will be at every city in Lynn County in the next week or so.
And we need to encourage our state and if wherever, they've got to be able to start processing in the home country.
Well, and I like your idea of getting, you know, a task forced together at the state level
Right.
To look at it, because that's how things will happen.
Yep, I think so.
Great.
Okay.
Just a question. Sir, and I forgot your name, Sean, I apologize. Could you leave your business card with Mary, our city clerk?
Sure.
Couple of us are wanting to have some contact info, so.
Absolutely.
And if any of you, I think you all have my email, but we can provide that, Marilyn can provide that.
It's on your paperwork that you gave us.
I think you all know how to get ahold of me.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you and thank you for really helping out on this issue too. And we need, we need to get it resolved, so it's our future. But yeah, thank you, Julie and Sean. Okay, that's it on item E. So F would be the second reading of the ordinances. So council, you have four of them.
Mayor, I'm sorry, we'll take a five-minute break.
Want a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Maker five minutes. All right. Great folks, five minutes. Thank you.
I'll make a motion. We approve the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second, and any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm planning to vote against this. I, I, I think we have plenty of ordinances about people who are hanging out in the wrong places, and I think they can be apprehended if the effort was just made and told not to do it. So, I, I plan to vote, vote no on this ordinance.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, second reading on page 335.
An ordinance admitting the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII by the creation of Section 7.84.210 titled Enhanced Law Enforcement Area and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion. We approve the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Bessie?
I'm going to, I initially voted no to read the ordinance second time, mainly because I kind of agree with a lot of people out there. We haven't, I mean, it was just kind of put upon us, and there wasn't a lot of discussion, and I thought, well, waiting a couple of weeks isn't gonna be bad. So, I'm gonna vote yes, but what I want to do is I want to put in somewhere that we have a review of, by the police department and maybe Justice Scott, because Justice Scott doesn't even know that this is coming. I mean, he probably does, because he's a great one. But until we pass the ordinance, I understand that the police can't tell him to do anything or whatever. So, I'd like to have a report within six months, which is October, to see how it's doing, because if it's not doing any good, then we change it.
Could I make a recommend, well, I'll just, if we're gonna give a, a report, make it a little bit more than six months, because you actually, in order to qualify it, sometimes it has to be a six-month period. And so, you're kind of using that six months, so maybe seven months or so, yeah, or just something, just to see if there's any, yeah.
That's kind of what I was feeling, because you get March, April, May.
In theory, somebody could commit three crimes in, in, in two days and be, you know, then cited.
So, maybe by, by December, by the end of the year, have a, have a report. I mean, I think it'd be a good idea, and we do that for a lot of, you know, you know, the ordinances, we do get an update.
Yeah, and a lot of times, it just kind of gets shoved under the rug, and we don't get it. So, I'm putting it on my calendar to make sure, because I agree with a lot of people, you know, there's so many different balls in the air on this. And I still say it's gonna be really hard for, I mean, if they do the crimes, you know, they're gonna do the time, but they're gonna be let out again and stuff like that. And so, then they're gonna be, I mean, I think it's gonna be more, more work for the police than it may help. I don't know, you know? And I agree with the gentleman from Chance. I mean, I mean, they're right in the area. So, they try to help these people. And sometimes, they do commit crimes, but they still, you know, try to help them and stuff. And so, I still think there's a little bit more. So, I'd like to, I'd like to see a report, and I mean, I'm gonna vote yes for it, but kind of reluctantly.
I think we can do that, yes. I think, Dick, did you have one first, then, Bill?
Yeah, I kind of. I think unless Mike over here lives inside the boundary, I think I'm the only one that does live inside the boundary.
Yeah.
And I've been there, I've done that. Back in the day, a guy came around, smashed the window on my old Buick, and we got into, well, not really fisticuffs, but some pushing and shouting and yelling. This is even before any of you lived, came to town, I'm sure. This is back in the bad old days, back in the 70s. And...
Oh, wait a minute, I graduated '71. What are you saying?
But I think excluding people from our area, I think that is just, the question was asked, is this really constitutional to do this kind of thing? I don't think it is, and I don't think it's necessary. I really don't think it's necessary. Every once in a while, when I'm kind of channel searching, because I can't find anything I want to watch, I come across our, our city page on, on TV. And here's Ray's movie of the Veterans Day Parade. And I think, thank God, we got something that's kind of interesting to watch. You've probably seen, seen our movie from our, our street car of the people as we're, in the Veterans Day Parade. And I, I'm reminded of my writing on that float and watching the public as we go along, and we try and look cheerful. I, I have a harder time of that myself. People, I'll say, when there's a picture, well, smile, Dick. I say, well, my face just isn't made for smiling. So, anyway, and I see people that remind me of my brother, my brother Paul. My brother Paul was drafted out of graduate school and sent to Vietnam. And he didn't have to go out there and kill people like so many of our young people had to do. He didn't have to put up with the bombs and all that stuff. He got to, he got to be in Saigon and have worked as an office person. And, but he came back, and he found that he was almost a pariah, because he'd been in the service and he'd been to Vietnam. Well, as luck would have it, he got a job in Salem. He got to be the registrar at the Land University. He was a smart guy, a smart, probably my smartest brother. And while they were there, he and his family and his, his young kids, we invited them to come down for the Veterans Day Parade. And during those years, I wasn't writing it, so we watched. And he said, you know, that's the first time I felt good about my military service. And, and I think of him as I'm writing in the parade, and I see some of these guys saluting flags, and they're raggedy, and I think to myself, I bet those are, I bet that guy is one of our homeless guys. Now, is he the guy that I'm gonna say, you can't live in my neighborhood, you gotta be out there because you peed on the lot twice? Or, I guess it's three times you have to be a bad guy to be excluded from our neighborhood. And I sympathize with you people, my neighbors. You're my neighbors. Not anymore. Okay, sorry. Sorry about that. But I, I can't vote for this. Sorry. I don't think, I don't think it'll come anywhere close to solving the problem.
Bill?
So, a question for Sean. What would it take to add a sunset clause to this ordinance? So, assuming it passes, it would require action by the council in terms of a vote to continue the ordinance after six months or, or a year or some set period. Amend the ordinance, I mean, could we do that tonight, or do we need to start through the process again with the readings, or?
We could go back and rewrite part of it tonight. Another way to do it is just to come back at the end of the year and decide if you want to repeal the ordinance or not. And you can do that in, in the same manner, so that it's not automatic, and you have to decide whether, because if you put a sunset clause on it, then you have to do a new one, as opposed to just terminating the one you have.
Well, I, I kind of like what Bessie was saying in terms of, let's take a look at it. Again, this is assuming it passes, but let's take a look at it seven months or whatever, eight months. I think maybe some stronger teeth is the sunset clause, because it does force the council to take positive action. And, and if you don't, by sunsetting, then the ordinance goes away. It's no longer in effect. So, it requires action by the council.
Yeah, you could, I mean, that's the will of the council, you could do it that way too, so, yeah.
I, I think it accomplishes the same thing, though. What Bessie said is, we'll just review it, you know, and then see what the, you know, if it is becoming, it's sort of like the new transfer of public property to, from a vehicle. Some people call it the panhandler law, but it's actually just not transferring any property to a vehicle. No one's been cited for that, but it has been a tool that has educated people and reduced the amount of panhandling that we have in our community. So, and I look at these as the same thing. It's just gonna be that tool that's gonna help to educate and be able to change the behavior that we're, that we're seeing in the community. So, Rich.
Well, wouldn't the same thing be accomplished if Peter just put it on the whiteboard?
It's, I've already added it to our tickler for six months from now.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll come up that way.
I'm sorry, Peter, are you going six months or till December?
Well, one October is about six months from now. I agree with Sean that you need a little time after that to get a, you know, a sampling of what's happened. We'll have it, but we'll have it on the list of things that need to come back, and we can decide at that point if you want to look at it in October or wait till December.
Okay, yeah, because there's so many, many times that, you know, things just kind of get missed, you know? And if we don't, yeah, so that's, whiteboard's great.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion, it's been made in a second. Any more discussion?
Call question.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Next would be the second reading, which is on page 338, and this is motor vehicle parking.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter 13.21 titled Regulations for Motor Vehicle Parking.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, all right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And next is on page 341, and that is abandoned vehicles.
An ordinance submitting the Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter 13.70 titled Abandoned Vehicles.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
And any discussion, Bill?
I just want to add that last month, I sat in on a neighborhood watch meeting. A particular neighborhood was having a problem with this, and they were very encouraged when I told them that this, this was coming before council and giving the police department an additional tool. The problem wasn't this particular neighborhood, it was tied with other crimes. Drugs, theft of packages off the porch, that, that type of thing, harassment, intimidation, and anyway, just, it was interesting to hear the, just like we heard from folks tonight, what's going on in their neighborhoods.
So, they thought abandoned vehicles added to these other crimes?
Well, the issue is, like Chris was telling us from the police department, they come out and they move it one foot, and then it starts the whole process over again. It's a big game, big game with them.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
I don't know what that has to do with drugs and stuff.
Call question.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next on page 343 is the adoption of resolutions, and this one's for setting the motor vehicle parking fees. What would you like to do with this item, council?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, next is redefining the membership of the hospital facility authority. This is on page 345. I updated you on this last, on Monday, and so we would need to adopt the resolution to be able to change the makeup of that board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, and then we'll need to be, we'll come back at who's gonna end up being the members on that committee, so we can take that up at a work session. Next is adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Item D.
D, okay, 1D, okay.
And the 2A.
2A, all right.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar with the op, with the exception of items 1D and 2A.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, and one D. That's on page three fifty-five?
Three fifty-six, I think. The issue was, we had a discussion about clarifying the counselors, that no one on the council has independent authority. That we all have authority only through four votes. And this says no counselors. It would also include the mayor would not have any independent authority.
So, what paragraph is it, what paragraph?
What it says after, down at City Manager Report, three quarters of the way down, following discussion, it was agreed to add language that clarifies that counselors have no authority as individuals, but only as members of the legislative body. And it should read something to the effect of that all members of the council...
Or counselors and mayor.
Right.
And that's all.
Right, it should...
I would...Well, I guess with that, I would remove objection.
Okay, all right, so moving for one...for item one D.
I would move the adoption of item one D.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and then two A.
I just didn't know staff could shed any more light on it. You see these from time to time, but I didn't really understand what the purpose of the rideaway was for. It mentions a barrier strip.
It's to let a street go through.
I thought you went home.
It's a transportation...
Chicago Street dead ends there, and that the subdivision is developed and...
Is she doing okay? You're just gonna let her talk?
It's been a stubbed street for forty years.
It'll connect with Columbus Place.
Yeah.
Barrier streets were things that routinely got decades ago. Property would develop, it would extend the stubb street to an undeveloped property that was next to it. There was fear that that undeveloped property might somehow take access from the new rideaway without approval, or that services or something would come off of it. And so, cities, not just Albany, but across the state, created what they called one-foot barrier strips that separated the road rideaway from that adjoining parcel. And the theory was, at some point in the future, when that neighboring parcel developed, the barrier strip would be removed. That was the theory. But in practice, there were tracts of land that often ended up being converted to county property because nobody paid property taxes on it. And so, over time, what we would have was what looked like a road, but there would be a series of one-foot segments, often owned by the county, that were, you know, isolated sections of the rideaway. And so, what's supposed to happen is every time somebody develops next to one of those, the city would take affirmative action to convert that little one-foot strip to public rideaway. And that's what this is doing, is taking one of those one-foot strips, converting it to public rideaway. And the good news is, we don't do this anymore. We don't create those one-foot strips. Anything that that neighboring property would want to do off of a stubb street would take a city permit anyway. If they wanna put in a driveway, if they wanna do a utility connection, something takes a city permit. So, we have the ability to restrict access to that substreet, new street, without the barrier strip. So, we're not doing it anymore. But this is just kind of a remnant of the way business used to be done twenty, thirty years ago.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item two A on the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is on page three seventy, and this would be appointing Thomas Schrout to the City Tree Commission.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, and then next would be appointing Roger Phillips back onto the planning commission. This is on page three seventy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I know better.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, okay, we got through the agenda and business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
I'll just let you know, I won't be at the April eleventh meeting.
Okay, all right, and...
Yikes, I won't either.
I won't either.
I'm not having a meeting.
Well, and we just shoved off Republic Services.
Maybe we oughta get a guest counselor then.
Can't vote.
That was for April ninth, Mayor, that...
Get your baseball bat.
It would be April ninth, and the three are absent for the regular meeting on the eleventh.
So, three of you...
You won't be in.
But if Republic Services, if we do a public hearing, we wouldn't be able to vote. It's gonna end up delaying them another couple weeks.
Yeah, it's delaying them.
So, do we have a lot of business on the eleventh that needs to be taken care of? Should we make...or how many counselors are here on the ninth? Should we hold a longer evening meeting as a regular council meeting, the evening of the night?
I'm not gonna be here on the ninth either.
You won't be here? What about you, Bessie? What about you, Bill?
I'll be here.
I should be here.
So, maybe we...this council wanna do that? Is we just...we have a work session, take a dinner break, and then have regular council meeting that night, not do it the Wednesday night? Since there's only three counselors missing?
That works for me.
You wanna do that?
It would.
Okay, does that work for staff?
What kind of business is scheduled for that meeting?
Well, there is, but if we have three counselors missing, it's...
I'm saying, what kind of business is scheduled for that meeting?
There's a ward of three bids, and then there's a...this is on the eleventh. Tentatively, there's a quasi judicial public hearing, perhaps, on Pheasant Run. What Sean is shaking is that's not gonna happen.
You don't wanna do that one. The full council.
Right. So, that wouldn't be happening on the eleventh. But the wards of the bids, we could bring to the ninth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, if you... I mean, it's the council, you could technically do the Pheasant Run subdivision appeal on the ninth, but you're gonna have a long night. I mean, it's gonna be four o'clock till maybe eleven or twelve, so. It's just whatever council wants to do, it's gonna be.
Well, it was tentative for the eleventh anyway, so I'm not sure they're ready to go.
So, why doesn't everyone put it on their calendar? I better look on it.
Put it on the calendar for the evening of the ninth.
That's true, we've already...have we already advertised that meeting?
For the ninth intent.
No, for the eleventh.
When we talked about it today, it was tentative.
Okay, so, yeah, we may wanna push them, tell them, since they got council now. I understand, and have a poor one, too, so.
Okay, so how about if everyone just kinda puts that down as a placeholder for the evening, a longer session on the ninth, and then we're tentative on the eleventh? Well, staff can get it worked out, what's gonna work, but, yeah. Okay, does that sound okay? All right, okay. Anything else, Bill?
No.
Okay, Dick, anything?
No.
Okay, Rich?
I have a request from a constituent who pointed out that we do not have welcoming signs on some of our entrance... Some of the entrances to the city. And with all our furor, all our hoopity-doo going on with putting signs downtown and so forth, isn't there some way we could get the service clubs together and come up with a representative sign for...from the south and from the north and that's it?
There has been, I can't think of the lady's name, but she's called many times over and over wanting to have a nicer sign as you enter Albany on Highway twenty. And that has been something kind of in the works, and it's been kind of... It was kind of put on Parks Department, and there hadn't been the funds. But that is something that drives me nuts every time we...I drive by it, because it's just, to me, not a very attractive sign.
There isn't any real sign.
Right.
That's coming in from the north.
Right, but there's nothing also coming from the east.
And...or from the south. And, you know, there's the...there's the ODOT signs, but that's it.
Yeah.
So, maybe we could make some signs in, you know, carved wood or something. But put the new logo on it, too.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Peter's gonna check in on it.
Okay, and he was saying, well, you know, there are various service clubs that would probably want to be a part of raising money and getting their nose stuck in it. I mean, they're raising money, you know.
Back in the fifties or sixties, where you have all the service club signs hung below the...
Well, and it did, and that's...
Well, this guy was probably eighty years old, so that would've been...
And that was requested, somebody came to me on that years back. But it was very...you know, the civic clubs would all, you know, advertise, you know, and pay for the sign, but we cannot...you know, we can't regulate who's gonna be that service club either, or whatever group it is that wants to advertise, so. And that's why a lot of cities have gone away from that, but, yeah. So, yeah, but no, I think it's worth checking.
And other than that, that's it. Well, other than I will be gone on the ninth...well, the fifth, the ninth, and the eleventh.
Okay.
And you guys can just slave away.
Have a good trip, yes, yes.
Okay, I...when I booked the flight, my back was hurting, and I said, to heck with it, and I just went first class, so.
Back doesn't hurt, mine doesn't.
The back no longer hurt any.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Anything, Bessie, Mike, anything?
No.
Okay, the only thing...I didn't have anything, but it just came to me tonight. What would you like to do on kind of the request we had from CSC about sort of getting folks together, you know, working on the homeless issues? I've seen a lot of folks having...wanting to find a solution. I think it'd be a time if we just pulled...I don't mind taking the lead on that. Marilyn and I have been involved with homeless issues for many years. And maybe just convening agencies and everyone. And...but I really wanna hold everyone's feet to the fire because gotta stick it out and come up with solutions. Because I've seen it over and over, over the years. People are energized, mobilized, wanna be a part of a solution. They're there for a few meetings, then off, you don't see them. And then it's just left with a few people to take it on, and I don't want that to happen. But I...I mean, I think it's worth just convening up a...kind of a community meeting on it and get folks together and see what they would like to come up with solutions and to be able to...how to be able to tackle the homeless issues, so.
Well, if nothing else, it would give people an opportunity to say, gee, we need to do something about it. And then, of course, that can be turned back on and was said, oh, gee, good idea. Well, when are you going to start? Because there's a lot of folks who, well, they wanna get started and then, you know, let somebody else do it.
Well, and I also think it needs to be out in the community is helping out with the costs associated with the cleanup. I don't think, you know, we should...the city of Albany should be carrying that full burden of cleaning up all the camps and river fronts and get some effort going to help out on that, so.
You know, Mayor, one of the questions or suggestions I heard out there asked, have you talked to the homeless people? And I heard you say, yeah, we have these meetings and whatever, stuff like that. I think Helping Hands, Signs of Victory, actually go to them. Because, yeah, they're not gonna come to City Hall if you have a meeting, no way.
Well, Helping Hands and Signs of Victory would, but the individuals wouldn't.
But we had our homeless summit, we had it at the library this time. We've always had it at City Hall. We had better turn out at City Hall than we did the library this time. It was all agencies, and there wasn't one person that came that was homeless. And yet, we reached out.
But that's what I'm saying. We had a number who had been homeless.
In the past, yeah. But we did not...and we reached out, you know.
But that's what I'm saying, to actually go to that building.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If I can jump in here. This is the work that Hart has been doing for sixteen years. And twelve years, sorry. It feels like sixteen sometimes. And I would like to put it to that board to come up with a time and place to have that forum. Maybe we move the summit up six months this year, don't wait until November. We're right in the process of planning the annual resource fair for May seventeenth at the Boys and Girls Club. We have a board meeting again in April, April tenth. And I can bring it up at that meeting and find out what they would recommend doing. Because those are all the people who are doing that kind of work, who have been concerned about potential impact of the ordinance on access to services. They don't understand that the ordinance is not going to affect them in the way that they think it will. And I think that's a good place to start that conversation and get other people involved, whoever needs to be involved.
Well, and I agree. I mean, to me, and that's what I suggested when I met with CSC last week, was having the Hart board take it on. And I seemed to get pushed back that it needed to be more with our Parks Department and our Police Department, and it was pretty much...
That's fine, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, but I think Hart can go ahead and initiate it then, and we'll bring on more people, and who all wants to be involved, come out and be a part of the solution.
And I'm gonna suggest a good starting point when this meeting happens is review the nineteen-page report that you put together. I heard a lot of people speak tonight that gave me the impression that they were not aware of what the city was doing. And it's a good starting point from the standpoint of, here's what we're doing, just to raise awareness. But it also is a good starting...or kickoff to, what would you add to it? What should we do different? What would you do better? What would you...how would you supplement what we're doing? Where are the holes? What are we missing? We could sit here and think we're doing a pretty good job, and then some other people have a different look on the issue, different perspective, and say, well, here's some suggestions.
And that's the best thing, is when you pull everyone together, you let them all know what has been done. And because, other words, you know, if you get a community meeting going together and nobody does know what has been done, and everyone's making...it's not constructive. Because, other words, that everyone's making suggestions of stuff that's been done. Let's work on stuff that's actually gonna be proactive in solutions. And that's...and we'd love to hear it. You know, if other people have other ideas of what can be a solution, we wanna hear it, so. But I do want everyone to be committed to it. And not all of a sudden have it be put back on the city to have to be able to, you know, continue with trying to, you know, address the needs, but... So, does that sound okay? Staff, but we...I mean, Hart is a separate entity, basically, but we can suggest and ask them if they would like to lead on this.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay? All right, Peter, do you have anything?
Just a reminder, as you talked about the calendar, that the CIP work session is next Thursday evening, the fifth.
Yes, yep.
And I'm hungry, that's all.
Yeah, and you're gonna be gone on the fifth, too? Rich, okay, yeah. Okay, that's it, staff have anything else? So, all right, with that, then, we...work session is on April ninth, and we could have a regular session that evening. And with that, thank you, folks, for sticking out with us tonight, so.